This conference will now be recorded.
Hi, this is the public on the phone, just letting you know.
Here we go. Clerk, can we please start the recording? Today is Wednesday, July 24th, 2024, and I'd like to call tonight's city council meeting to order. If we can all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under our law indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, may I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Boyle.
Absent and excused.
Councilmember Casper.
Here.
Councilmember Servini.
Absent and excused.
Sorry, Councilmember Lehah.
Here.
Mayor Strobin.
Present. Thank you, Clerk. We are waiting for our city attorney. She is stuck in traffic, so we are going to move the agenda around a little bit, which will take to the consent agenda. There are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did you say aye?
I said aye.
Oh, you did, alright. Opposed, abstained, motion passes, thank you, council. This takes us right into presentations and proclamations. Tonight, we have council on aging presentation, and it'll be presented by Franklin Johnson, the commission chair. Franklin? Come on up.
You've been getting around quite a bit.
Yeah. Yeah. There's, there's reasons for it.
I understand. By the way, just apologize for having that.
Is your mic, is your mic on?
Testing, testing.
There you go, if you want to just move it up a little bit, yeah. You're, you're tall, Franklin, so, there you go.
As I was saying, my name is Franklin Johnson, I'm the Chair of the Carcana Commission on Aging, and with me is another commission member, Mr. Chen Lun, back in the back. And we want to thank you for the opportunity to spend a few minutes of your time and talk about our commission on aging. So with that, slide please. The Commission on Aging is a nine-member volunteer commission. Our main focus is to provide leadership and advocacy for the aging population in Clark County. We expect that in the next, probably less than 10 years, we're going to have over a quarter of the residents of Clark County, we're going to be 60-plus. So, these issues are really significant, and we're trying to prepare and provide a more livable environment for our aging community. Next slide, please. One of the things we've done is, some years ago, the Clark County Council established the Commission on Aging and they gave the mission of developing an aging readiness plan. And so, after 10 years, we decided it was very important to update that aging readiness plan because we had lived through a pandemic and some other issues that had changed the landscape of issues for the aging. And so, in order to do that, we developed a survey that we submitted out to the residents of Clark County. After we collected the information from that, we formed a stakeholders group, we had some public engagement. We invited members of the community to come and give us their thoughts and ideas on what they thought was important. We didn't want to just say, okay, this is what we think, but we wanted to hear from the Commission on Aging. We had some strategy workshops, and then we ended up prioritizing these strategies. And we ended up with over, over 80 strategies. And our intent is to go back at some point and keep the public updated on what happened with those strategies. Some of them may have been integrated into other issues that were already ongoing, some may have not been feasible. But we wanted to make sure that we honored the investment of time to, from the public, to make sure that we closed the loop and let them know what happened with the information that they gave us. Next slide, please. In the Healthy Communities chapter, we had a number of goals. To improve access to healthy food, create safe, accessible parks, as well as walkways and sidewalks, create a welcome environment for age-friendly environments. And we recognize that if we do that for our seniors, it also makes it better for everyone else. So, a lot of these things, even though we come under the cloud of Commission on Aging, we recognize that these things makes it better even for younger folks as well. Next slide, please. In the Housing chapter, we talked about having a range of housing for multi-generational families, provide housing that allows people to age in place. And I have to confess, I didn't really appreciate that when I was younger. But our last house, my wife wanted to get a master on the main, but I didn't realize that as old football injuries and so forth caught up with me, that that was a real, real plus. So, we were fortunate in that aspect, but we think we need more of those kind of opportunities for our older citizens to be able to get into a home and be able to stay there throughout their entire lives. We also looked at supporting the development for more affordable housing, so that we get away from just the high-end kind of offerings that we've had so often. Next slide, please. In the Mobility chapter, we talked about design options for our transit system. And especially, we wanted to look at increasing the alternatives for transportation for seniors. Currently, they are looking at increasing the number of short buses that they have that go to seniors' homes to pick them up, take them to medical appointments or to shopping and so forth. And so, as our population grows in that category, we want to make sure that there is a variety of options that they have to be able to get them around to their appointments, especially if they're no longer able to drive and so forth. We're also looking at designing communities for safe walking and rolling for a range of users, you know, either wheelchair or other assisted transportation devices. Next slide, please. In the Civic Involvement chapter, we talked about supporting the efforts of neighborhood associations and volunteer groups to engage older adults. And one of the things that we recognize is that a lot of aging adults are engaged in the community, volunteer and provide a lot of support in a lot of different areas, meals on wheels and others. We wanted to continue to offer a variety of engagement opportunities for in-person and online. Next slide, please. Emergency Preparedness is a new chapter that we didn't have in the previous Aging Readiness Plan. And after we went through the pandemic, we noticed that there were a number of services available to seniors that those services were interrupted in how they delivered them because of restrictions and so forth as a result of the pandemic. And so, we held a series of what we call fireside chats, even though we didn't have a fireplace, to be able to talk about what changes, like say Meals on Wheels had to make. They had to scale down the number of times that they would deliver meals, so they delivered more meals. There wasn't as much personal contact. And we found that the isolation from the pandemic was really a critical factor in terms of people's mental health and also not having the avenues that when they got the meal delivered, they would spend time exchanging information and talking with the people who delivered them. But now, all of those opportunities were reduced, so there was a dramatic impact on that. And so, we decided to focus on emergency preparedness this entire year as our focus chapter. And then next year, we're going to be looking at another chapter to focus on. But we have been having a series of emergency preparedness discussions at each one of our meetings. And our meetings are held the third Wednesday of every month, and they're televised on the CV TV channel. That's for Clark, Vancouver. And so, we've had someone from the CRESSA come and give different speeches on different areas, like, how do you prepare your go-kid so that if something happened, forest fire or something, and it's a go-now thing, you have to evacuate? Well, you don't want to wait till you have to leave to decide what you're going to take. So, we had people from CRESSA who have experience in these areas come and give us a series of presentations. And step-by-step, how to prepare your go-kid, how to make a plan, you know, the kind of things that you need to have in your kit. But also that it's customized for you, you know, my, my to-go kit might not work for you. So, you think about the things you like to eat, the things you need, in particular medications. You know, you want to have an extra week or so of medications ready to go so that if you're displaced for a period of time, your health doesn't suffer because you're without access to your medications. And these, all of these past meetings are available online, so you can go and look at those and catch up if you are interested in preparing an emergency kit or the plan or any other aspects, how to store water and so forth. The, the reality is that if we have an emergency, the likelihood is that our fire and our police are going to be tied up for days, if not weeks, before they'll be available to come and address any issues that you as an individual might have. So, the gist of it is to prepare yourself to kind of be on your own for a while and not expect that you're going to have access to those normal services in the way that you would given a normal period of time. Next slide, please. Our Aging Readiness Plan, that's what the ARP stands for. It was approved last September. And we were fortunate in that update process, the Clark County Council gave us some money to hire a consultant to help us update that plan. We had to focus on two priority strategies. And that was really my focus on community engagement. First, to educate older adults and caregivers. And when we say older adults, we should also think caregivers seamlessly because a lot of times, the same issues that impact the person themselves also impacts the caregiver because they have to manage for those situations as well. The other was to team with the Area Agency on Aging and Disabilities of Southwest Washington. And we try to call that acronym that you see up there, ADSWA, but it doesn't make sense. So, you have to give us a little freedom and go along with it. So, we're teaming with them because they have a lot of information, and they partner with other agencies that provide services for our aging population. And remember now, aging isn't a bad word because hopefully, if we're successful, we'll all get there. So, we continue to focus on those two areas. We're also working on a partnership with the Clark County Public Health. So, that's still in the works, but there's a lot of aspects of health for aging citizens because they're our most vulnerable population. And so, the stronger that we can make that population, then the stronger Clark County is overall. Next slide, please. During this information, during this implementation, we had a number of fireside chats, local examples of community engagement, also worked with ADSWA, that Area Agency, Area Agency on Aging and Disabilities in Southwest Washington, as well as other areas in the country. We had people from Pittsburgh who were dealing with aging issues that gave, gave us a presentation. We had a gentleman that was stationed at Portland State, sharing some of the insight of what they did in Oregon in this area. So, we're reaching out, not just looking inward, but also looking outside to say, okay, what are other communities doing? And what can we learn from them? Next slide, please. In case you don't notice the resemblance, that is me giving the award. This lady was the recipient of our 2023 Silver Citizen Award. And we started that, we implemented that about three years ago. And we tried to recognize a senior citizen who is making contributions back in the community. And this lady is from the Washevo area, but the list of things that she is engaged in was staggering. It makes me tired just thinking about it. Our first Silver Citizen Award was Evelyn Hallett, who was 98 years old now. She was only a spring chicken of 95 when we gave her the award. But again, it was staggering the number of community efforts that she volunteers for and is engaged in. And I went to a luncheon with her and believe me, I would even bet that probably 95% of the people, including myself, could not keep up with her. She's a real pistol, very active, and I would only hope I can get to 98 and be that good. Next slide, please. This concludes our presentation. Our information on how you can contact us is up there. But I want to ask if the audience or any of the council or the mayor has any questions for us?
No questions, Franklin, but I do have a statement for you.
Okay.
You need to come out to the center more. This community is probably one of the most giving communities in the area, right? I, I'm looking at several in the audience right now that I guarantee would match that long list of volunteers and help. And, and I know something else that I didn't see in there was that, you know, a few of us all check on different people throughout the seasons, right? Because there's people that are stuck during the snow or, or during the high heat, no AC and such. So, there, there's a lot of love and community support here.
Well, thank you for that. And by the way, I just want to say, I was here last year, and I remember you. So, while you may not remember me, I remember a few of you as well. But it was a sheer joy to be out here, enjoyed it. Any other questions from the audience?
Where are those videos located that you had mentioned earlier, the recordings of the meetings?
Those are on the CV TV website.
There are also, if you go to Clark County, or if you just Google Clark County Commission on Aging, you'll also find those videos of meetings on that website.
Yeah, there's, there's a number of places where you can tap into a link, so.
You know, a lot of times, if you don't type in Washington, you end up in, in Las Vegas, Clark County, Nevada. That usually ends up being the top response.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, Will. I have a daughter in Clark County, and I have to always deal with that.
Oh.
Thank you, Franklin.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you. And we're not delaying the public comment just because to delay it. We're waiting for the city attorney, and she has taken the exit and will be here. It's vital she is here because she's got something for people here that want to speak about Vineyard Vista.
Okay.
So, with that, we'll continue on with our presentation and proclamations. Quarter two financial presentation being presented by Mr. Riley Barbera. Riley?
All right. Well, I know that you guys probably aren't all here to listen to me, but you're in for a treat because we get to go over some accounting. So, for all of you who may not have been to one of these before, how these presentations kind of go, there's a lot of stuff on here, I don't expect you to be able to read this all as I'm going over it. I'm going to kind of hit the highlights. So, to start out, I'm going over the general fund, we're going to look at a couple pages of revenue, and then all the departments that make up this. These columns here, we have 2023 actual, that's what happened last year. The 2024 budget, that's what we budgeted for this year. Q1 and Q2, the totals of what's actually happened so far this year. And then our annual projections, what we think is going to happen for the rest of the year. And then that projected variance, that's the difference between what we budgeted for this year and what we're projecting is going to happen. Can you go back? Slide? We're going to start on the general, yeah, no worries. All right. So, for the most part, this annual projection, that's just going to be Q1 and Q2 times two. And if it's not, then I've got a little footnote down here explaining kind of why it's a little bit different. So, just because there's a footnote doesn't mean it's that important, it just kind of means there's some different math going on. So, without further ado, I'll kind of hit the highlights here. So, this is the general fund revenue, just the taxes specifically. I've actually had so much stuff on here, I had to split it into two pages. But the big ones, the things to kind of highlight here are those property taxes at the top. Those do not come in evenly throughout the year, you know, you pay your bill twice a year. But we typically expect to get just about all of the levy that we put out, maybe a little bit under, but we're expecting to get most of that $691,000 throughout the year. Our retail sales, those have kind of exceeded our expectation for the year. Where things keep going as we've been seeing, we're projected to be about $48,000, $49,000 higher than what was in our original budget. So, retail sales are doing pretty, doing pretty well. And then those, the biggest numbers down here are the gambling taxes, those are the card rooms. And those have all been doing quite well as well. You know, maybe not as good as pre-Alene or pre-pandemic, but they're still our kind of, what we had budgeted in for this year. So, those are all coming in strong. So, in total, we're looking at having about $277,000 higher in our budgeted tax revenue in the general fund. All right, on to the next one. So, this is the other revenue in our general fund. And so, there's quite a few different income streams that come into here. And I'm definitely not going to hit all of them because a lot of them are pretty small. But really, the biggest ones are related to construction and building new houses, things like that. So, you know, when you build a new house, there's building permits, there's plan check fees, impact fees end up at a different fund. But all of the building permit and kind of construction-related revenue on this page makes up about $634,000. And that's of this $1.3 million projected that we're going to get this year. The other big one is this transfers in at the bottom, that is the repayment of a loan from the sewer fund. When the sewer fund first started out, they weren't making enough money yet, so they had to borrow money from the general fund. And they pay that back a bit each year. So, in total, we're looking at about $4.8 million going into the general fund this year, which is about $400,000 higher than we had budgeted. So, that's a good thing. And also, stop me at any time if you guys have any questions, want me to go into anything further. But if not, we're going to move on to the different departments. So, until we get to the kind of grand total page for the general fund, just know that all of these departments make up the general fund. So, all that revenue that's coming in is paying for all these departments. For our payroll, salary and benefits, rather than doing Q1, Q2 times two, we, I just pretty much started out with a brand-new projection based on what our current roster of people are and kind of projecting that ahead. So, you see that we are under on the salaries and benefits projection compared to what we had budgeted. There's one position that we are, I think, having filled later this month. That is an outreach coordinator, and I think they were budgeted to have their salary for the entire year. So, since they weren't here the whole year, we're spending less on salaries. Another thing to point out is the accounting and audit. We haven't really spent anything this year because we don't need all that much outside accounting help because we've got me. But every two years, we have our financial statements audited by the state. It's not because we do anything wrong, that's just because every city in Washington, they get audited. Some do it every year, some are on smaller cities, get it done every two years. So, we will have our 2022 and 2023 financial statement audit happening later this year. And it costs us money to do that, we have to pay the state to come and look through our books. So, that's why we do it every other year rather than every year. So, that one's all kind of coming in at the end there. Good. Onto the Legislative Department, you'll see, just based on these salaries that they pay me more than they pay the mayor here, which is kind of nice, if you're looking at how I see it, I suppose. There's a few things to, this services line, I have it broken up like this, salaries, benefits, services, supplies, you'll see all the other ones. Just because that's how, based on how our reporting goes, when, you know, when I submit our finances to the state, that's the kind of category. So, sometimes I'll break those out further because people request it. But the biggest thing in this services line are, we, we now have a state lobbyist and a federal lobbyist, and we have a grant writer. Those are kind of the biggest ones in there. It looks like we may not use all of our budgeted grant writing expenditures that we kind of appropriated. But I think we're going to use the, the whole about for the state and federal lobbyists. Overall, under budget in the Legislative Department. Moving on to the Municipal Court Department, I don't know if you know, you guys have gotten arrested recently, but we, we don't have a court here, we have the City of Battleground do that, we use their municipal court, and we pay them for the privilege to do so. Technically, these are all services, but it was too boring to have just one line, so I have them broken out. These are actually just every single account that we have in this fund, there's really not a whole lot in here. As you can see, $135,000 budget. And overall, we have, we're under budget and projected to stay under budget. So, I don't know if you guys are not breaking the law enough or getting better at avoiding getting caught. But in general, we are staying under budgeted in this one as well. Onto the Police Department. So, when we were creating the budget for this year, that was back when we still thought we were going to be contracting with the tribe. And we had one big number, it was all going to go in services that we were going to pay them. As you guys are, I'm sure, aware, that didn't go through, and we've been using the county instead. I think right now, we have one commander and two officers, so our projections for the rest of the year reflect that. I think we're expected to have a couple more officers next year, but this projection for the rest of the year is just including that staff. So, since that's not as many officers we had originally budgeted, we are quite a bit under budget in this one. So, of the about $1.3 million that was in the budget, we're only looking to spend about $600,000. So, when we get to the end here and look at the surplus that's going to be expected in the general fund this year, a big portion of that is underspending on police that we are expecting to ramp up in the future.
Real quick, Riley, does that number also include the $600,000 that we got to give upfront by the end of the year for the sheriffs?
We did not. That information came into me after I had kind of finalized my report. So, there's, yes, some new, I don't know if that contract is all signed or whatnot. But if that is the case, then this number is going to end up looking a lot closer to what we had actually budgeted for the year. And it'll be nice because we have the contract done, we know what's going to happen in the future, and it'll be nice to stop having to worry about that, it'll make my budgeting a lot easier.
And I'll be bringing that up in the mayor's notes up here real quick. But yeah, we have a one-time payment that's upfront, and that'll go for the officers' setup fees and such like that. So, it's about $600,000.
Just one time, not once a year?
Well, there's going to be once-a-year payments, right, or, you know, large sums. But to get things set up, we have to pay upfront on it.
Got it, okay.
That's also why to include, I didn't want to steal your thunder, you know what I want to do?
No, you're fine.
First one to break the news.
Well, I got more news on that, come to my mayor's report here soon, so.
All right, so on to the Planning and Community Development. You'll see some red, which we haven't seen in a while, we've done a lot of green, underspending, which is always nice. And the reason that these services are kind of over here, or one of them, is we've been building a lot of houses. And so, when that revenue comes in, you know, we have the plan check fees, we also have to pay for a planer. So, if we're building more houses, we're going to use more services here, but we're also getting more revenue in on the general fund side. So, that kind of comes out of the wash. But still, overall, we're looking at a bit of a under-budget here in this department as a whole. So that kind of comes out of the wash. But still, overall, we're looking at a bit of a under budget here in this department as a whole. And then the final department in here is public works, which is split between operations and parks operations. And this is the only one that's looking to be over budget of all the general fund departments. And that's because they are getting a lot done for guys. So which is actually kind of nice to see. Another thing to point out here is we're looking at a $124,000 over budget in this department in total. And about $98,000 of that is just because I forgot to put the repayment of a retainage bond in here. We had received money for if you guys need to do maintenance based on what we had just built, here's money, hold on to it. And if you don't need it, we pay it back in two years. That may be going out this year, but it's not 100%. It might end up going next year. We'll kind of see how that shakes out. And another good point out is the salaries and benefits that we are over on in this. A lot of times in the end of the year, we'll see some of the people that are working for the public works department. Bill more of their time to either the roads and streets fund or the stormwater fund. Those are the only kind of bodies that we have that can really vary how they spend their time, I suppose. For some of us, it's just allocated based on percentage and some people it's based on, on the day of the day, what they're doing. So it's entirely possible that we might really end up under budget here in salaries and benefits. But across all the funds in total, we're still under budget combined in salaries and benefits.
And keep in mind, counsel, that there was almost $10 million in funding coming from the state. And some of that money that's coming out of public works is also, you know, for design and such like that. So.
To help those projects.
To help those projects.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But we don't put the $10 million in there, right? We don't say positive $10 million.
Yeah.
So everything that I've just gone over is kind of all summarized on this one big sheet right here. So this is the general fund. This is the majority of what we kind of do here, except for all of her stuff kind of comes in the different capital projects and stuff like that. But so all in all, we were looking at about, we had a budget of about 4.4 million in revenue and about 4.4 million in expenses. Just about in total, a $54,000 deficit. And now our projections are we've got higher revenue by about $400,000 and $800,000 less in expenses. Sounds like maybe 600 of that will be going to police. But in total, we are looking to have a projected surplus of the year. And another thing I want to mention, because I get asked this occasionally, is if we don't spend the entire budget, what happens to that money? And the answer is it just stays here, stays in the general fund. So down here at the very bottom, or I guess the third line, the very bottom, we have the beginning fund balance for the year. That's all the surpluses we've had in prior years that just stays in this fund. So if next year we have, you know, a million dollar deficit in the general fund, it's going to come out of that projected $4.7 million fund balance we have in here. So clearly, if we have a million dollar deficit every year, that's not very sustainable. But on a year-to-year basis, if there's some fluctuation here, it just kind of stays in this kind of, I think you put it pretty well. The, the general fund is kind of like your checking account and like the reserve fund is kind of like your savings account.
And just another FYI for counsel, the last four or five years, we've had a deficit and we've had to take out of the cap or other funds just to make up that difference. Last year, when I came into office, it was one of my goals was to have a balanced budget without having to take from other funds to pay for it. We were at $0, if you recall, and the day that we came to vote for the budget, we got AWC's insurance increase of $57,000. So that's why when Riley was talking up there, there was a couple of notes in there that notate that. So we went negative $57,000 and had pull from the fund for it. But there was nothing we can do at that point. Yeah. So this year, we will either be positive or balanced.
Excellent.
All right.
Yeah, that's great.
Oh, there's a lot more. Don't you guys worry. There's more funds than that. That's just the general fund.
Very exciting.
So the rest of these funds.
We have a businessman as a mayor.
Segregated for different reasons. I'll kind of go with them as we do. So to start out, we have the reserve fund. What we have this fund for is just to kind of hold some reserves. So our reserve policy is we want to have one year's worth of general fund expenses just sitting in this fund. So you see, you'd be getting fund balance of about 4.2 million, which is a little bit closer to our actual than our budgeted. We will talk about maybe transferring some money from the general fund into the reserve fund when we're making our budget for next year to get that exactly right. But we're pretty close to that, which is nice to see. So if we don't get a single penny, we can still not cut a single bit of services and pay for an entire year for the general fund. Clearly, we don't want to do that, but that's just, that's what this was, fund is there for. And so it's probably the only money it gets is the money that we do have is invested in some federal bonds, state LGIP and just a savings account. So it gets money through interest and dividends and we pay some pretty small bank fees when we're buying or having bonds. Moving along. The impact fees fund, this is a fund that has to be separate based on Washington state laws. And essentially, when you build a house, you have to pay impact fees. So what, right? If you are going to build a new neighborhood and you need to build more roads, we assess a traffic impact fee based on what kind of new roads we might have to build. Same with park impact fees and the school impact fees, we just remit those straight to the school. We don't keep those because we are not a school. But schools are not in the business of selling permits, so we just kind of take the money in and pass it right along for them. So that's how this fund gets revenues in and then we do it to spend it on things like roads and parks. So the things that we had on the budget this year for projects, we had the Fourth Street Right-of-Way acquisition for about $485,000. And it's not gone through yet, but it sounds like we are expecting to get that done this year. And I think what I had heard is we're expected to be under budget on there, but we don't know how much yet, so I didn't want to make any guesswork. So I said, it's just going to kind of happen at budget. The kayak docks, I think that is being pushed until next year. And then the La Center bottoms takeover, that is expected to happen this year as well. And I haven't looked at it in the last few months, but last time I did look at it, you'll see this pretty large fund balance here. I think that was about $600,000 was the park impact fee balance of that, and the rest of that is traffic impact fees.
And for your information on the center bottoms takeover, I don't know about the verbiage on that, but that's good, Riley. That's the bottoms down here because the county owns them, except for a small portion of them. And we're in work, are works right now to take them back over in the city. So this way we can design the trails and preserve the bottoms as we see fit. That's a long process.
I bet.
Yeah.
All right. Onto the capital projects. I've left this fairly basic because there's kind of too much information to fit on here, so a lot of the details are on the next page. But something to highlight while we're looking at this page, some of the money that we get is from grants. And those are all pretty project dependent. You know, we're going to do this project, it's going to cost X amount and we're going to get Y from the state or from the federal government for it. And then we also get real estate excise tax, which is any real estate transactions. I don't know what the tax rate you pay on it, but we get a cut of that. And it looks like we're going to be a bit higher than we had projected for this year. It seems like these houses are really finally started to sell. We were kind of under budget last year. We weren't really sure why. We're kind of guessing it had to do with the mortgage rates, but that is picking up again. So the next page that we're going to look at, that's kind of a breakdown of that grant revenue and capital projects that was on this page. So the only thing in this fund that we're getting grants for this year is the comprehensive plan update. That is still, I think that could, I don't know how often that happens, but it seems like it's been going on for a while. Every six to 10 years. So we are expecting to, I think we're looking at spending about $110,000 total and getting a little more back. That's not because we're getting more than we spent. That's just some of last year's expenditures are going to be on this year's grant reimbursements. That's how it goes. You have to spend the money and then get reimbursed for it later. It's not, you get the money upfront and then get to spend it. That's just kind of the way things work. Yeah, like a rebate. So it sounds like the junction sign is getting it pushed till next year. Put that in the budget meeting one more time. I feel like that's been up there for quite a while. A couple of things that aren't going to get finished this year, that tends to happen every year. We always think we can do a billion things. And for one reason or another, something doesn't get, doesn't get done this year. You know, those bureaucrats and the people in government stop me sometimes, you know. But overall, I think nothing's like looking to be way too over budget. I think the one flagpoles might be a couple thousand over budget, but look at a big dollars like this, it's, it's not that big of a deal. I think we purchased the flagpoles and there just might be some concrete we have to install them. Moving along to the vehicle and equipment fund, this isn't a mandated separate fund, but it's one we wanted to set up. So, you know, if we all of a sudden need to buy some new bunch of vehicles for one that breaks down, we would have some money set off to the side. And we're kind of working on revamping our policy for that as in adding a bit more funding every year to kind of build this balanced up. We just haven't gotten there yet. So in the meantime, we have a pretty small fund balance in here and kind of use it as needed. So the only two things that were in there this year were a, a zero-turn mower and half of a street sweeper. I say half of a street sweeper because the stormwater fund was going to pay for the other half bit. And we were not going to be buying a new street sweeper. We were going to be buying a used one. And it kind of sounds like we're reexamining whether or not that makes the most sense. I certainly have never done it, but from what I understand, it is quite a pain to maintain and repair a street sweeper. So we are going to, to be determined what will be done with that. Onto the roads and streets fund. If you guys have been to any of my other presentations, you'll know that this one was brand new last year. We've still had all the same stuff going on, but we have just recently started following the rules of you have to separately. Have a separate fund for all of your roads and streets related incomes and expenditures. So on the income side, we get money from the state, that is your motor vehicle fuel tax, multimodal tax, a few things like that. Where basically everybody that pays, you know, gas, when you're filling up gas, that all goes to the state and then they distribute it based on population. It's not your dual tax that was paid for in La Center. That's what you get. It's based on a split of the entire state. And then all these grant incomes, these are all project specific. And I'll kind of briefly go over all these projects, but I'm the accountant. I know, I don't know all the details of how these projects are actually going. But to start out with, there is the Pacific Highway Path Project. So we had, I think, an original grant of about $200,000 in revenue that we were going to be receiving. And we had to have some match on that. So for $233,000 in total expenditures. And so our annual projection for the rest of the year on that one is pretty much everything that didn't happen, didn't come in last year or didn't get spent last year. But I think we're looking at wrapping that one up this year.
And then Riley, on that one, we also received a million dollars as long as the climate act is not repealed. So we'll know more of that on November 1st. So that makes us short about $1 million from completing that project. Which if any of you know, that's not a very safe walk out to Riverside Estates. There's a tiny little overpass out there that is about this far, or you know, between the road and the, the bridge. We, we don't want to wait for somebody to get killed. So we're hoping everything stays on track.
Then the Fourth Street and Breezy Creek Project, this is a pretty bad project. It's going to be going on for years and it has been going on for a few years. So these amounts that we have budgeted for grant revenue and expenditures every year, that's kind of just what we expect to happen this year. It's certainly not like, all right, we're going to finish it. This is how much it is. So you're over budget, so on and so forth. But we are getting grant reimbursements as we spend money out on that one.
Before you go any further on that one, Riley, Tracy, is Brian on the line with us right now? Brian, do you want to, you and Tracy want to talk about that grant?
Yeah, I'll let Tracy talk, but I'm happy to as well.
There we go. Brian, please.
So we're talking the, the grant for.
Breezy.
Fourth Street?
Yep.
Yes. So we had applied for a state, state appropriation of federal funds that are coming through, washed out from the federal government for the culvert portion of Fourth Street. We had applied for half of the projected cost of the culvert because we were looking at previous grant awards and didn't think that we had a chance of receiving the full amount. So we'd asked for half. But based on the applications, state staff came back to us and said, hey, if we give you the full amount, would you be able to move forward with the project? And we of course said, absolutely, we'd be happy to. So we did receive the full $8.4 million that will fund the culvert portion of that project. And that basically allows us to move forward with the project as soon as our federal permits come in. And we're expecting I think those to be completed here this fall.
And a projected start date on that, Brian?
Say that again, Tom?
Projected start date on that?
Oh, the project has to be completed during the in-water work window due to the fish passage requirements. So we are projecting bidding the project this winter, getting a contractor on board, you know, late this year or early next year so that they are ready to get started and hit that in-water work window, which I think starts like June or July, I want to say, and runs through until the fall. We also have to obviously carefully time the project with school traffic because, you know, this is obviously the main route in and out to all the schools. So that's a factor as well on project timing.
Brian, you can't see it, but we've got a room full of people here. So that's why I wanted you to put that out there. Because just for your information, when that starts, it's going to be, it's going to be hectic. This is Fourth Street right here in front. It's going to be widened and it's going to be probably a two-year project, just so you guys know. So when you're traveling starting next June, just add extra time. Thanks, Brian, and congratulations, Tracy, Brian. Thank you, Riley.
And then the last project I'm going to highlight on here, it just says horizontal curve project. The full name of it from last year's capital projects presentation is horizontal curve and roadway departure safety improvements. That one has, I think, fully paid for by grant revenue that we're going to be getting in, $865,000 will come in and $865,000 out. It looks like we're only going to get through the preliminary engineering portion of that this year, so the rest will be carried on to next year's budget. You also notice this one has a pretty low fund balance. That's because it just started last year. And as I said, you get grant revenue in after you've already spent it. And the state shared revenues we get from motor vehicle fuel tax, that is not enough to pay for all this stuff we need to maintain our roads. So we also get some transfers in here from the general fund and from the capital project fund, which is where a lot of these expenses used to have come out from. All right, we're almost done here, folks. These last ones are enterprise funds. And that is stuff that the government isn't necessarily always in the business of doing, which is things like utilities. So what we have is we have a sewer and stormwater. Those all have to be segregated funds. So, you know, our general fund is not helping them out. They're not helping out our general fund. So starting out was our sewer operations fund. Our sewer fees are a bit higher than our expectations or what our budget was this year. Not because we increased what we're charging for sewers, but just because there are more houses that are paying for sewer. So as I mentioned, with the real estate excise tax, more houses being built, more houses being sold, more people starting to pay sewer fees. The biosolids processing, that's all pretty small stuff, but the sewer fees, that's the biggest one coming in here and beating the expectations.
Do you know when the last increase in rates on sewer was by chance?
I don't know. It's been a while. So I think we're going to be having a rate study done later this year, I believe. And so we'll see how that goes, but it's been pretty low for quite a while.
Okay. Thank you.
And so just irregular operating portions of these, this is the salaries, benefits, supplies and services. Those are quite a bit less than the money coming in and you'll see this transfers out, which kind of brings us back to a kind of a very small surplus or deficit number. These transfers out, some of that goes back to the general fund. I mentioned that on page one, repaying their old debts. And then the other bit, a little bit of it goes to the sewer capital fund, to kind of fund big projects that are happening in the sewer plant bigger going on. Oh, yep. So they're paying $400,000 a year going back to the general fund. And that's a pretty big loan. I think it's at about $14 million still. And because we had to buy the whole sewer system and it took a few years to actually start to get money into it. So that's kind of only paying the interest and we're, we're figuring out how we're going to either start accelerating the payments back to that. But we don't want to, you know, not have enough money so the sewer can't make any, you know, their expansions if needed. So we're still in the process of figuring that out, but that's kind of how it shakes out for now.
Not only that, Riley, counsel, just so you're aware, the sewer plant's aging and there's going to be some money that's going to be needed to update it. So there hence rate plan or rate study. And then as what Riley was talking about, the repayment of it. So that will be upcoming in the next six to nine months. Is that about right, Tracy? About six months? Six to nine? Okay. Just be aware.
Yeah, to get that done before casino and stuff, students buildings.
On to the sewer capital fund, that's the other part of the transfer I was talking about. You see this $150,000 transfer in up there. And so for the projects that we had, we had quite big ones. I think it was last year or two years ago. But this year, the only ones kind of we had, we're at the La Center pump station. We're paying for that for five years total. I think we're three years down. It sounds like we're going to hold off on the bypass pump and the turbidity meter replacement until next year. But we're looking to pay for the odor control media and the lab equipment all this year. And yeah, and so the, where is that? The general sewer plant update, that is going to include the rate study and a couple of other things as well. And then on to the sewer debt service fund. In addition to the loan back to the general fund, we had also had a public works trust fund loan and we pay about $250,000. In addition to the loan back to the general fund, we had also had a public works trust fund loan, uh, and we pay about $250,000 a year back to that. Uh, I think we've got, uh, final payoff is in 2028, we're getting down to the end of that loan. Uh, and then money coming into this is, uh, capital facilities charges or sewer development charges. Those are very similar to the impact fees, uh, you know, the park impact fees and the traffic impact fees. If you build a new house, you also pay this development charge for the sewer fund. Uh, so we've been building up the balance in this one for if we need to drastically expand our sewer system or rebuild the sewer system, I don't know how that all works, but, uh, that's kind of what the money goes into this one for. And then very finally, we have the stormwater utility fund. Looks like if you're paying a sewer bill, you're probably paying a stormwater bill as well, uh, much smaller than, I think it's 1060 a month. Uh, so pretty small sewer fees in here, but, or stormwater fees, but, uh, also beating our expectation a little bit. Salaries and benefits, you'll see we're quite a bit under budget, I think I had mentioned this in the public work section. Some people tend to allocate their time to this fund a bit more towards the end of the year. There really aren't any dedicated bodies just to the stormwater fund. Uh, it's all people that are doing all sorts of things, uh, and whenever they can, they work on stormwater. And then the storm pipe lining project, that was a big one, uh, this year, and there was a big $100,000 unexpected, uh, thing last year. Usually this has quite small operating expenditures, uh, that storm pipe lining, that is, uh, the pipe under the casino, it sounds like it is in danger of not being a pipe anymore, or, uh,
It sits right under the corner of the New Phoenix. So we have to take care of it.
And so that $100,000 is not going to fix it, that is just part one, and we're going to see how all that works, uh, in the future. So I'm sure we'll see a nice capital projects, uh, presentation later on to see when we're building next year's budget, so, uh, we'll have a bit more information on that. And that is the Q1 and Q2 financials.
Alright, thank you Riley, great job.
Thanks Riley.
Very informative. Counsel, do you guys have any questions for Riley?
No, good report, thank you.
No, thank you.
Good job, thank you again Riley. Good job. Okay, it looks like the city attorney has arrived. Oh, right, so just to get you up to speed, uh, Janine, we went ahead and skipped over the public comments until you arrived and started on with the presentations and proclamations. So at this point, I am going to skip public comment and the, uh, mayor's report and go right to the attorney's report so that you can make the announcement to the public.
Absolutely, um, and first of all, I wanted to apologize to counsel, to staff, to the public, um, for my delay. I got stuck in traffic and, uh, it's coming, uh, from the north, and so my apologies, um, and, uh, I understand how, how impatient, how, how hard that is. So thank you for your, for your understanding. Um, and I was the one that had actually asked the mayor if I could make some comments, uh, to the citizens and also to the council in, in advance of the public comment. In particular, because I understood from the mayor that there was a decision issued in the Vineyard Vista and that there was very likely to be a lot of, um, public comment anticipated on that. And so I wanted to discuss what the council's limits were in what you, what testimony you can take and what how, what that effect would have on your decision and then answer any questions that you have. So at this point, I do not know if the Vineyard Vista decision will be appealed or not. But it appears reasonable to assume for your purposes that it might be. And the city's municipal code makes the council the, the decision maker on these kinds of permitting decisions. It's called a type three quasi judicial, uh, decision. And that means that the council's role is not your typical role as a legislator and a policymaker, but your role is going to be sitting in judgment as a judge, uh, over the permitting decision. And so there's a few rules that come into effect, um, when you're deciding the quasi judicial decision. Um, the, the, the state has a few different laws. One is called the appearance of fairness doctrine, and that means that not only do, does your decision have to be fair, it has to appear to be fair and not have any, um, um, hint of impropriety to it. So you can't favor one side, you can't have contact with just one side and not the other side. It's called ex parte contact and it's prohibited under the statute. And then you can't pre-decide before the hearing what the decision is, you have to review the materials and take, and hear the testimony at that hearing and actually make your decision. So it's just like a court in a lot of th- those respects. Then the next thing that the law says is that, um, under the local project review of this, of the, I think it was adopted as part of the Road Management Act or, or alongside it, says that there's only one open record public hearing on a permit. You can have closed records appeals of that open record hearing, but you can only have one open record hearing where you take testimony. And at this, under the city's process, that happens at the hearing examiner, uh, um, hearing and decision. Where the proponent is there, they, they submit their, um, information, the staff has a report, and then the, the, the hearing examiner takes the testimony and then makes a decision. So that's called the open record hearing, and there's only permitted to be one of those. And so what that means is that the city council can't take new testimony or new, um, new evidence on that matter. You're limited to the record that was before the hearing examiner in your review. So the council's role is going to be to review that decision and see if the hearing examiner applied the right laws and whether there was enough evidence in what the hearing examiner, um, looked at to support the decision that he made. And so with that, it would be limited to those who participated in that hearing, um, and not a whole new hearing. So I, I think I understood that there might be an understanding that, that this is a public comment, like your typical legislative actions where you can consider testimony and, and make your decision, but your role in this is much more limited. Um, and so it's, it's my advice, and I recognize it's not very popular advice, but it's my advice that you would not take public comment on the Vi- Vineyard Vista, um, application until we knew whether or not there was going to be a hearing and then, not until the hearing if that turns out to be the case. And then at that hearing, the proponent would be there, I think the city issues notice and there will be a, uh, it'll be a public hearing, but it'll be a closed record public hearing, it'll be, it'll be based on that record and, and the, the, the folks that were at the hearing below get to argue why the hearing examiner got it wrong. Um, and, and the proponent argues why the hearing examiner got it right. And, and you get to weigh in on that and evaluate the evidence and make your decision at that point. But you can't sort of pre-decide it or take additional evidence. Um, and if you were to do that, then it had, it's kind of taints the judicial process and it may work to actually invalidate the council's decision, um, if there is a violation. Or if the decision isn't based on the record, um, and based on the information that's supported, uh, in the record, then, um, it can be appealed by either side to, to superior court. And the, the court, the judge in that case will then look to see whether the city erred or the hearing examiner erred or the council erred by either misinterpreting or misapplying the law, or whether there's enough evidence to support that. But that's going to be based on that one open rec- open public, open record hearing, there we go, I got it right, got all the right words out. So I, I hope that answers questions and, um, uh, it's to the extent that folks were hoping to comment on that, I, I apologize for that and I'm happy to try to answer any questions, I, I don't know if we, maybe aside or in a different.
Yeah, I'm just trying to follow what you're saying, so the hearing examiner, they make a decision, right? Once they collect all the facts and then, and then that information is brought to us and then we get to make the final, just, no, okay?
Yeah, and this is, I have to say.
How do we?
This is very odd, in every city I have worked with, the hearing examiner decision is appealed to court. It does not have this intermediate step with the council, the council has the authority under the law to do so and your code sets that out to allow you to do so, to, to hear appeals of that hearing examiner's decision. But your, your hearing of that appeal has to be based on what the hearing examiner was looking at and what the
Got it, I see what you're saying. Now, any comments that we hear from the community about this topic needs to be made after the decision.
Hearing, yeah, if, if there's an appeal, at that appeal hearing.
Comments can only be from the people that were actually involved with the hearing in the beginning, right? So it can't be anybody else that comes in, so they can't do that, otherwise it'll actually taint it. And there could be lawsuits, lawsuits and more litigation at that point against the city or against the developer.
Got it, okay.
So, and it's, it's, it's called standing, that doesn't mean that, that folks can't work with the folks that were in that, but tho- those are the people that can testify and those are the people that can, can, um, appeal, they have the authority to appeal and then their arguments are, are just like the cities and just like the proponents are going to need to be what, based on what's in the record.
Basically, we're the judge and jury at that point, so we can't take public comment on anything on Vineyard, Vine- Vineyard Vista? Did I say that right? Vineyard Vista, did I say that right?
So it's, it's just because you're sitting in a different role. Ninety-nine point nine percent of what you do is in a legislative role and there usually are not any limits on, on the, on listening and taking that testimony. But when, when you're, when you're going to be judging the rights of an applicant, um, and their ability to use their property, that, the, the courts and the, excuse me, the statutes, the legislature has said, this is the process you have to follow. And so it's just a different role that you're in and it's, it's not my favorite role for ca- for council. So, um, if, with your permission, I, I'm, we may have a discussion about what, what that appeal process looks like in the future, but for now, this is what's in your code.
Yeah, we will be looking at that because we shouldn't be the ones doing that, it should go up to the, uh, supreme, not supreme.
The superior court.
Superior court, uh, instead of us.
The, the city's hearing examiner, usually the requirements are that they're, they're a lawyer and they, you know, they understand the rules of evidence and they understand, um, what, what, how to apply the law in that situation. And councils do as well, but it's just they're, they're sort of trained in that and that's why it's, um, that's why you usually hearing examiner issues are usually, I, I, I have not read the decision because I just learned that it was issued today, a few hours before the meeting, but it was something like twenty or twenty-five pages, it was, it was quite a while. So that's, that's why those decisions are rather lengthy is because the hearing examiner is trying to apply every element of your code and, and determine whether the facts met that or not. And then you get to decide under your code whether he got that right or not. And I know there's some strong opinions about whether that is or is not, but that will be, uh, a matter for a hearing.
So, um, my question is, so is the, so the one that's allowed open hearing, that's already happened?
That's already happened.
Like a couple of years ago?
Well, it, no, it happened, I understand that there was a hearing recently.
Um, are you saying the hearing that we had in June, the one where we had the, uh, what's his name, the guy that was in charge?
The hearing examiner, Mr. Turner? Yes, that is the open record hearing.
I mean, we had, I, I was at that meeting, alright? You guys, along with the builder, we, you said you took a break and you were going to address our concerns. Including that, you know, and I think it was really spelled out clearly what those concerns were. We took the break, nothing happened. The builder sat right here and didn't say a word about our concerns, not a word. Now you're telling me that that's the meeting that we're talking about that is going to judge all this?
So, so that is the open record hearing, that was the, that was the city's opportunity, or that was everybody's opportunity to submit the testimony and to, and to raise the concerns. And then it was the hearing examiner's job to weigh all of those concerns, to weigh what the applicant said, to weigh what the city staff said and to weigh what the community members had said. Um, and then look at the law, look at what the city's code says, and then apply that to figure out whether that application should be approved or not. And he decided to do so. Now whether he is right or wrong in that, that was the hearing at which he And that would
Frank, 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 hold on, just one second, let us finish. Let us, let us finish, there's more to it.
So the answer is yes, those concerns that, 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 that that information is not in the decision, that is exactly what can be brought, but to the city council at the next hearing. But it has to be related to the things like, I, I, I can't, I can't argue for or against, but you can look at the record and say, you know, so-and-so testified as to X, you know, the city hearing examiner did not consider that information or did consider that information. So that, those are the arguments that you're saying that would be made at that hearing, but to make them now would actually undercut the process because it is, it is a judicial process, not a legislative one. And I, I, I'm happy to answer procedural questions if, if that is the, usually I don't answer questions from the audience, but I do understand this is unusual.
Questions on here, but it, it has to be very careful of what you guys are asking because we cannot taint what's going on up here or there will be litigation and the su- the city could be sued, right? We have to keep it as clean as possible. Here's the thing, if you were at the hearing, the original hearing, if you are going to appeal, you will be back to the appeal hearing and that's where you can state the concerns and voice the issues that you were just talking about, Frank. Okay? Now is not the time to do that because if that's the case, it's going to ruin what's happening or going to happen and it can go a, a really bad way. That's why the council is not allowed to comment on it, not allowed to hear the comments on it. Yeah, it's, it's, uh, not the perfect process, but it is La Center's process. Okay, you want to take questions?
So can you procedurally share this story? My understanding is that if you choose to file an appeal, that it is at our cost? That the fees associated with it, that the fees are associated, any kind of costs associated with that appeal, experts, anything else comes to come at our cost?
So, I am not, I, I'm, I'm a rather new city attorney, so I apologize. So my question, so So, so typically, yes, there is an appeal fee that the, whoever's going to appeal pays an appeal fee and is, and, and whatever addition, sometimes there are additional costs and charges of the city as well. So tho- those are fees that the city is incurring and those are usually paid by the applicant. Then what I'm not sure of, and I'm looking to Tracy, but I can certainly look it up and, and get it back to the mayor, is whether, if the, if the appellant prevails, like you do appeal, you, you pay, you, you go through the appeal process and you win. I think that there's usually some attorney's fees clauses in those, but I don't know what those are and so I don't want to represent what those are. But that is a, that is a query for, um, for me to go back and look at and, and answer the question more fully.
So we actually have your name and number, Celeste, right?
Right.
So at that point, the attorney can go back and look it up and then get back to you so you know.
What's not clear to me, $1,100 is very clear to me, but it's not clear to me, the little disclaimers underneath that that talk about people's fine, et cetera. So I have no clue what the total cost of an appeal like this would be. I have no idea how people about doing something like this, I with our data probably know what it's worth of, that's concerned about. So, you know, we're, we're feeling a little bit here, like, I understand that, that the concerns about wanting to hear additional testimony at the time that has passed, that's fine, but I think that, you know, us then having the burden of financially bearing that burden of that appeal, you know, probably will get everybody in this room to get up and walk out and say just another example of the habit they
Are you listening?
So, I don't know that I can talk to La Center's process. I can talk, but I can talk generally, usually there's an appeal fee. And then if, if for example, an interpreter is needed, or if for example, new evidence is admitted that the city needs to hire a consultant to evaluate, or, you know, there are other city costs beyond that, I think those, tho- those are what I generally understand to be the extra costs now. I, but I, 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 please don't hold me to that because I haven't reviewed it completely.
Well, the developer paid for an attorney or paid for the representation and the commissioner and such like that. So usually if you are filing an appeal, that's going to go for the people that are filing that appeal, right? That's how our judicial system has been set up for years. That doesn't, deeper pockets doesn't mean they prevail, Celeste, that doesn't mean that at all.
They have prevailed and we basically are now in a judicial field and because we don't have the expertise to be able to call any questions, right? A lot of the things that is the detail
You need to get a good land use attorney.
Thought I saw some of the hands.
You have to stay neutral. You have to stay neutral.
Yeah.
But a project like that in general has happened in this city. So are we just in a position where we just didn't know in time to get enough information about what's happening and then come with more information at the hearing? That, by the way, was kind of pulled together by some people who worked with somebody else who worked with someone else. And then reading all this extremely deep of what you had to do. And I don't know what we kept hearing in that meeting, the codes, what does it mean to code? A lot of us are saying, what's the process? Without talking specifically about that one, because I understand, I don't want to change anything, but part of that frustration is that people, we knew that you might have heard on this, and we're going forward, we didn't have time to properly address the concerns that we had, to a council, by the way, who wasn't represented during that meeting, if you weren't allowed.
Or not.
But you were not here. So even one of the people that I was supposed to ask about, can a council base with the rest of them? And it was suggested that answers would be given or certainly looked at, and that doesn't feel that that happened. So everything is understanding, depending on from the overall review, or whatever it was. But I think now it's like, how does this happen in a town like this? Or is that, has that happened in every other development so far, where the timeline was what seemed that quick? And then other people who may have both only had an appeal, were their only recourse? Or was there something unique about this that caused this whole thing in the first week to happen? An appraiser or Joe ran that, is that the process every time?
So generally, the process is set out by statute. There 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 are, it's under the, it's called the Local Project Review Act under the statute, and particularly GMA cities must comply. And it sets out some fairly strict timelines, and I can't cite what they are, but but in terms of how long the city has to determine that the application is complete, and then how long the city has to 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 meet certain milestones to reach a decision. And that that is, that is state law. And then that is, the process that the cities followed is the general process for Platts or for type three decisions, they're called, in in cities. Nothing I saw in what happened was anything irregular in what I've seen happen in these kinds of, this level of decision in in other cities or, and so I'm assuming Le Center. But I'm, I, that's all I can speak to that matter.
I think you would be careful that the notification and the timing of the notification and stuff like that is actually part of the decision. The hearing examiners have, like, talked about it. But it would be looked at as part of the process. But by talking about it today, we do not-
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Celeste. And just so you guys know, the council is not aware of any of this. We heard your public comment at the last meeting, and that's because the hearing examiner hadn't issued a statement yet or a decision. Otherwise, we would have had to stop it then as well. And I'm trying to keep their ears as clean as possible right now. So if you guys can keep that in mind. The process was followed by the city. We we have strict laws that we have to go by. Tracy, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I just want to share a couple thoughts based on what I'm hearing in the audience and based on my experience sitting on the other side. We have to follow the same process of procedure for anybody, any type of application. There's no special exceptions, no special rules. This this particular development is opposed by people in the community, which a lot of developments are not. So you don't know that this happens because some people just don't care if something's being developed by them. In this case, we have some concerned citizens. So you guys are following the right process and procedure, and so I was pretty clear when I sent that email to you and say, here's a process of procedure I can share with you. What I would recommend is, I believe that there's an HOA. Am I correct with that? You guys don't have an HOA? Okay, good, that's even better. Great, so let me share why I'm I'm saying this is, when you have an HOA, you always have an attorney, when you have insurance providers, so on and so forth. And so I can't recommend anything, but if I was in a community with an HOA, I know that there's expertise within the communities, and I would make sure that the information that's provided in the decision does address every single comment that was made. It talks about every single comment and how it met or it did not meet, and that's actually outlined in there. So a public comment was meant, he had to look at each public comment, the hearing examiner had to do that, and he did, and he addressed it. So what I would do is take that information, and if you disagree with the, that information, you could absolutely present new information if you decide to appeal. And when you decide to appeal, anybody who was speaking at that testimony, the initial hearing can can represent a group. So just because maybe a new person cannot speak doesn't mean that somebody who spoke before can't be their representation. So I would, I would recommend that you actually read the pages in there because everybody's testimony that spoke, he called everybody's testimony out, he put the names in there, he gave a response to that, and he gave his decision based on what the code was. So you have to look at that code and see what it says. The only thing you can do outside of that is ask for the city to change the code for the future. But what I also want to share is that when a developer comes in and and presents a development, let's say you want to sell your lot, and and you want to sell it to a developer, and they're going to develop homes on it or whatever, you as the seller have the right to sell it to whomever you want. And and whether or not your neighbor agrees with what's going to be produced on that sale is irrelevant, but it's their right to come and testify and say, I don't want that there, a horse farm, whatever, you know, a farm, onion farm, you know, I don't want that next to me or whatever. But what I'm saying is, then you have this process of procedure that you go through, which you guys are going through right now. But the biggest thing is, is to follow the procedure and make sure that you present evidence that is in relationship to the law. It's, it's, the law is, how do I say this? I'm trying not to give too much information and give some at the same time.
You're trying not to insult your city attorney, right?
Yes, I'm looking at you like, I guess what I, I'll guess what I would recommend is, through the HOAs, there's a lot of expertise. I know there's some engineers that work within the development, and I would just say that I would reach out to your HOA and look at the comments and actually read the comments and look at the law that's associated with the comments, and then I would take it from there. That would be my recommendation. But if you're going to appeal, you can appeal, and you have a lot of representation from all the people who submitted their comments that are there to support and and can submit new documentation to show why that was wrong. And, oh, I know one other thing I want to say. It's going, it's all going on my mind. This is just an application process. I just want you to know that. It's only an application. If they can't meet the requirements, because when comments are made of concerns, if they can't meet the requirements to address those concerns, it doesn't mean that they're going to get approved through the city. So I just wanted to share that with you. So it's just an application, it's an initial concept, it's not an approved set of engineered plans. And so then at that point, when it comes to the city, all these comments that have been made, the city will take into consideration if it does go forward and and it does move forward and through the appeal process and it still gets approved. Then the city, the city staff who are up here who look at those designs and use our engineers and will look at that, will make sure to address all those comments that are in there to make sure that those options are taken into consideration because we have a development below her with a whole handful of people that are in here that are saying, we have a concern over the drainage. So it's our job as professionals to make sure that that drainage, that drainage is addressed. So again, this is just an application. It isn't a full set of plans, it's a submitted application, an idea, a concept, but it's not approved engineered plans. That's what it's our job afterwards if it moves forward to do. So I just, that's all.
So let me, let me make one follow-up to that to maybe clarify a few things and then absolutely with the council's permission. First of all, I want to say that that it's it's my advice, and I, I think we're not telling you anything we wouldn't tell anybody else or a proponent or anybody. If if you don't like a decision, all I can do is advise you to go seek legal counsel, you know, to go to go seek the expertise that you need. And so that's not that we're telling one side something that we wouldn't tell the other, we would tell anybody that if you're not happy with the decision, this is the process that you do. And but the other point you raised was a very good one, and I didn't mention it, which is that this is a subdivision application, correct? So this is the dividing of the land on the, on the ground and recording that. And there are some conditions, but some of those conditions are, shall comply with the engineering standards for this, or shall do, shall comply with that. That, and that, I think, is the two-step process that you're talking about. So the decision is that the subdivision, the actual division of the of the lots, that that is, if not appealed, that is, that is final. But the, what the development, how the development complies with those, that second stage of rules is is still not yet decided. So this is a subdivision application, and those, those, those things that are in the decision are going to be binding, but those things that say, you know, city staff, you know, will comply later, those are the things that will, that will be in a subsequent decisions of the city, which are, which are subject to the same timelines and rules and and appeal processes as this decision. So I hope that answers the question.
And it, and it is what you do for one, you have to do for all. Nobody gets special circumstances. So I'm just going to give an example in relationship to what she said. If you have somebody that wants to come in and subdivide land and they want to put in a hundred homes, and they can't meet the qualifications of the drainage and the setback requirements and everything, but they can meet it with ten homes, then we only approve the ten. I'm just giving extreme examples for you. So so just because they presented this for however many homes, if they can't meet that, just like when your subdivision was developed, if they can't meet the drainage requirements and everything, then they can't put in that many homes. They have to be able to confine and do drainage on their site per code. So just because you see a hundred, it might be ten or whatever. So it's just an application, I just want you to be aware of that. And we'll make sure that we follow the the rules and regulations that are outlined for a subdivision to be able to fulfill the needs of the roads, the drainage, so on and so forth.
We really need to be careful, you guys. I think we're starting to tread in dangerous territory. Yes, Celeste, yes.
So my question is this. So I I understand exactly what you're saying, that they will be held accountable to the codes. I assume that the developers who developed our communities, right, were held to the same obligations, and many people in this room are having drainage issues because they failed to build things in, that so such that, you know, these drainage problems wouldn't happen, and they are impacting our homes and costing us as homeowners hundreds of thousands of dollars for being our assets, like, being together. So my question is, if you approve what they're doing and this happens, do we come and sue you? Are you the ones that are accountable for holding these developers to what they should be doing? And if they don't do it, and it impacts us in a material way, do, are, do we come back and sue you?
There's not an obligation in in that regard. The, the answer is a legislative. So so the the council has adopted a set of rules. These are, these, if you're going to develop property, this is what you have to do. If if that is not addressing the issues that the citizens want, we need to change the legislation so that, so that those, those standards that the developer has to comply with are corrected. And but but whatever the standards that are adopted by the council, those are the state, those are the only standards that the staff can apply. We can't do other things.
You, you, you look at this thirty-fourth inch document, and there are three pages that say, the applicant shall, the applicant shall, the applicant shall. And those are obligations that mostly address the concerns that we have to address. So if they do those things, and they do those things in accordance with the code, and you monitor them and say, you have done these things, and they still have problems that we have tried to tell you about today, and in that hearing, who's accountable? I mean, what I was told by the hearing examiner, if that's a matter of course, civil court, then I can only assume that you guys have some accountability in that since you have oversight for these developments and assuring that they did all the thou shouts.
We are going to assure that they did all the thou shouts, but whether the thou shouts prevented or didn't prevent is, is, and who's liable for that is a different question. And that is, you're you're sort of talking about city legal liability here, and I'm not going to answer that in this, in this context. But so it's not something that the city's responsible for, but I'm not going to have a legal discussion or a legal risk discussion. I will advise you to seek legal counsel. Other, anything?
No, no, I I actually love seeing you guys here, to be honest with you. I love seeing people at the meeting.
I I see a hand.
I just had a clarification question. So is it whoever was at that meeting, or did whoever spoke at that meeting? Because the gentleman presided, and if you're going to make the same thing as your neighbor's day, please don't get up and speak, you don't need to hear it twenty times. So I would just-
Usually there is a, a sign-in sheet where you put your name down as a party who who is is an interested party, and I, and usually those are the ones that have standing. I'm looking to council or to the staff to make sure I'm not misstating that, but-
Yeah, it's actually listed in that report. He put everybody's name who spoke.
But sometimes you could, if you put your name on the list as an interested party, but even if you don't speak, but you've put your, you've attended and you were-
Yeah, on the sign-up sheet.
As a member of that proceeding, then you have standing. And I I apologize, I recognize I'm the bearer of bad news, and I'm, I, but I, the the opportunity will be at a different hearing with with notice and for the applicant to be here to respond.
There is open public comment, if I might say something, just because I'm on the phone, I would like to add that. There is open public comment tonight.
Every single person doesn't have to file a separate appeal and pay eleven hundred dollars. A group, a group can file one appeal. Okay, just, I just-
Hold on, hold on.
No, and and I understand, I just, I just wanted to make sure because that sounded like it might be a misunderstanding, and I just wanted to clarify that. Okay.
Yes.
It's eleven hundred dollars to get to a point, and then it's whatever additional funding you require from all the factors for the hearing examiner. But we have no idea before we get into it as a group that we're having to make a decision in six days now, in which to be ready to move forward, making a financial investment on something we have very little faith in.
Let's, let me do this for you.
It, it's, the, the information, so when you do an appeal, an appeal, there's an outline of items that you have to present. And so the fees that you would be paying in addition to the appeal would be anything that we would have to review above and beyond what you've already submitted. You've already submitted information. If you have new information to submit, then that would be what that cost would be for. And and for instance, let's just say you were going to submit some type of a drainage report, and we haven't seen that, it's new information because you're appealing it, right? So we would have to review that drainage report. If you have nothing new to submit, there would be no additional time to review. So for-
I I'm going to interrupt here for a second because I'm not quite sure that that is true. My understanding is this is a closed record appeal, and it's based on the record below. Now, there are emergent circumstances under which new information can be taken, but it is not a guaranteed thing. So I I I'm not prepared to talk about what those are, and certainly that is getting to the, to the litigation stage, but I, I'm not sure that, I I believe this is a closed record appeal, and the decision needs to be based on what the record was before the hearing examiner. Got it wrong. And, and- So maybe any public comment?
I just want to make sure, is there any more questions? I want to make sure that you're, you're heard there. So if you have any questions, please speak up.
We may have a call on-
I have a question, and I'm on the phone.
What, what it's in relation to?
Okay, caller, go ahead and press star six to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, please. No, yes? Are you there, caller? Caller number four?
Hi, sorry. Uh, yeah, hi, this is Kimberly, Kimberly Goheen Albin. Hey, I'm actually was in town, uh, going to speak, you know, hopefully before seven o'clock, my, uh, tactical civics meeting that I was in town on East Side. And I'm driving home, I'm going to be there in just a little bit. I have to stop to get gas, but I'm going to attend the, uh, meeting in person tonight. Um, unfortunately, because the attorney was late, I questioned, you know, on purpose or not, because people had to wait. And there is an open public comment that I think people, um, should be able to speak on and then wait there and, uh, talk tonight on that open public comment that's coming up. With that said, I find it very disturbing that, uh, this wasn't even on the agenda. Uh, I had no clue about the, and I'm not sure if I heard, heard right on the phone, uh, Village Vineyards or something. I, I don't know. But, um, it's not on the agenda and therefore it's not transparent in the first place. And another thing, I will join with however anybody wants to, um, use my knowledge on this, because I'm going to be speaking about this, uh, as part of the growth management and all that takeover stuff. But, um, I want to be on that group to help them navigate if they would, uh, like to have that, uh, information. That's all I have, have to say until I, um, am there for the public, um, comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Okay. Any other question? Ms. Kimberly El, Elbron?
Elbin.
Yeah. And she, she will be here.
Yeah.
Okay. Before we go into public comment, I do want to remind everybody that the List Center Our Days Twilight Parade...
Has to get gas first.
Yeah. Twilight Parade is Friday, July 26th at eight P M. So please use alternative routes and plan ahead for road closures and come on down and enjoy the parade. I, I don't know if any of you are new here or if you've been here a long time, but the parade is a blast. It's a lot of fun. We've extended the route this year. There's candy for the kids. Um, it's just overall a great experience for all families. The List Center Our Days Festival will actually take place on Saturday, July 27th from eight A M. to dusk. So please visit listenterardays.com for a schedule of, uh, of events. There's going to be a lot of vendors, there's going to be music, there's going to be cakewalks and, uh, baby contests, and it, it's, it's a blast. I, I can't even tell you how much fun it is. And this year, um, one of the members got a dunk tank. So there are going to be a few people there that you may want to dunk. I'm not one of them, so we're good. I know, I, I already see it over there. You guys are gearing up with your tomatoes and the oranges. Um, no, there, the, uh, school football coach, uh, Lambert, he'll be one of the people that you get to dunk. So please come on down, uh, and the money or the proceeds that, for that are also going to go to the boosters. Um, there will also be, so yes, please remember that, that's this weekend. Come on down. I'm sure almost everybody here will be there. Come up and say hi.
It's a car show.
A car show, yeah, huge car show. You, you'll see beautiful vehicles there. Just remember to keep the comments on the Vineyard Vista away from the counselors, please. Um, there will also be a blood drive here at City Hall on Thursday, August 1st from 12 to 6:00. For an appointment, visit redcross, redcrossblood.org or call 1-800-733-2767 and enter the List Center zip code. The staff and I, uh, we raced to see who can get the blood done fastest. So please come on down, uh, join the race. It's good bragging rights. And Maria's not here tonight, or I'd tell you that she's lost a few of them. National Night Out will be Tuesday, August 6th from four to six P M. at Holly Park. Please come on down. We'll have the sheriff, uh, there. Commander, what, what are we doing at that night?
I'm sorry, for the National Night Out?
Yeah.
Uh, we're going to have, uh, several of our vehicles down here. We'll have some deputies around. You can come up and talk to us, see some of our equipment, ask questions. We're here for the community and, um, we welcome being part of List Center National Night Out.
Are we doing the armored car, the side-by-side, the tank, the helicopters? What are we doing?
Uh, we have a paper airplane. Uh, we will have a lot of gear out here. We'll have the armored car out here. We'll have some of our other stuff. We may even try to get one of our K-9 officers to come out, maybe give you guys a little demo of what they do. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, would you put a bite suit on for us?
I would do that in a heartbeat.
Oh.
Do that in a heartbeat.
He's kind of more...
Have you ever seen Casey in uniform, too?
Ooh.
So you're here right there.
Is it six o'clock? Is it six o'clock, you said?
Uh, four to six.
Oh, four to six.
Yeah. Be a good time. Uh, I do want to let the community know that we have received the, uh, police contract. Uh, I forwarded it off to our attorney and we're going to start going through it, working on it. Um, as you've noticed, we, we have police back in the city, not just the two sheriffs or the two deputies and the commander, but there are still people filling in overtime. This contract, uh, will also bring in more officers as well. Um, I think I signed a check two weeks ago that I was watching the pricing going up for fines and court costs and such like that, which tells me that crime has never left List Center. Uh, it was just hidden and we didn't have officer-initiated calls, and we have those now. And we're going to continue to crack down on them. And I also want people to be aware about speeding. Still seeing some of it. Commander, if we could really hammer it down, I'd, I'd like to control the speeding. People are driving really fast through a 25 mile an hour zone, and there are a lot of kids that are running the streets. So please be aware of that. And that is all I have tonight. Before I go to council comments, I am going to go back to the citizens' public comment. Okay? The citizens' public comment will be general comments. If you do happen to speak about Vineyard Vista, you will be cut off. I have to alert you of that. So please keep that out of there. So next up, uh, citizens' public comment. Clerk, please call up any public comments from the audience.
I'm just going to call every name. That way, if you have something besides, um, Vineyard Vista, you can come up. If not, just pass. Carol Gibbons. Okay, so we're not taking those. So, um, Linda Workman.
Here. If you have a comment by the city attorney...
Linda, if you can come up to the mic, please state your name.
I'm, I'm not there.
Oh, okay.
Susan Thompson. Valerie Post.
Valerie Post, also representing my dad, Pat Conti, 35602 Northeast North Fork Avenue. I will speak gen... Here. Can you pull the thing?
Turn the mic off.
It's, it's up all the way.
I will speak generally. Can you hear me? The mic isn't on, but you can hear me. Is it on? We'll get me to have it.
Tap it, maybe.
No, it's not.
The batteries perhaps.
What, what, one sec? Yeah, one second. One second.
Did you want me to give it a mine?
No, this happens. For those that are new to the council meetings, batteries do go.
Is, is it working now?
No.
Okay. It's, but they go fast.
Do you want her to just take mine? We have a lot of these up here.
They're wired, they're wired.
I know, because she can come to you.
Oh, that's funny.
Can you just, uh, I'll take it.
Okay. Okay, so I'll start over. Valerie Post, also representing my dad, Pat Conti, 35602 Northeast North Fork Avenue. And I will speak generally. A lot of people are very concerned and have expressed many concerns, not just about one development, but about many of the developments and the growth that we're seeing in List Center, the projected growth. This is one of those things that could easily turn into an us versus them mentality. I don't want that. I think we can all do better. We're hoping that the council will listen to our concerns that we voiced. Like I said, there's just a lot of people that are really concerned, and if we could put a pause on some of this growth that's affecting, uh, traffic, increased lot sizes, increase the green spaces in the new developments, just be a little more constructive about how we go about this and, and address some of the citizens' concerns, that would really do a lot. So I think we can create a win-win for everyone. And I just would like to, to make sure that the residents of this town still have a voice before our council. So, thank you.
Thank you. Did it work?
It's working. Yeah. I think she needs a shortcut.
Right. It wasn't a well-designed bias.
Hi, I'm Melissa Flat. I'm here with List Center United tonight. So Mayor brought up several exciting events in the next week. Also, on Friday, August 2nd, from 6:00 P M. to 8:00 P M., we are going to have a paint night and popcorn for youth 12 to 18 years old at the, um, Wheel Club. No fee. We're working with the Arts Council, so List Center United, uh, will provide the space and the supplies. And we have a couple artists coming in that are going to work with the youth on creating a canvas for the night. So just something we're going to try to start doing, hopefully once a month on Friday nights, to get the kids out of the house and connecting. What time is that at?
Yeah.
Six to eight P M. I'm hoping that our newsletter goes out tomorrow, and we'll probably drop a few flyers off here and have something on the reader board as well.
I was just going to say, make sure you get it onto the reader board.
Yes. Love it. Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Chris Blair.
I was at the area on the 25th, therefore I was told that I can't speak to specifics. I won't.
Thank you.
Jim Irish.
Jim Irish, 1653 East Heritage Loop, List Center, Washington. Mayor, council, and citizens. There's two things I want to pass on. One is, one of the very good, important things on Saturday at the, at the Our Day Celebration is to restore your energy and restore your ready-to-go. The Lions Club is having its annual rib beer float trailer. That was actually at the snack shop. So please consider how we just love making rib beer floats for you. The second consideration I, or question I have is for, um, Tracy. But anyway, is that's the possibility, what the possibility is of having Heritage Loop striped with the center stripe? Seeing as how it's getting, uh, extremely more and more traffic, uh, coming down 18th and, and on down, to include semis, 18-wheelers coming down the city street? Anyway, we have, there was four of them on one day.
In Heritage?
Came down Heritage Loop, either from Aspen or came down from, uh, get through, um, South by Heights Road.
Commander, can you look into that?
But we have a lot of kids, we have a lot of young kids on their bicycles and et cetera. And with cars parking every which way, sometimes it would really would be extremely viable and in the best interest of the community to have those streets that have that much traffic, uh, or expecting that much traffic, to have a center line on them. And I appreciate it if that council could take that into consideration and public works. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Commander, can you make note of that on semis?
I already have, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. I was going to speak on Vineyard Vista, but I'm going to try to modify my comments on the fly. Dear council, thank you for the opportunity to make comments today. I have some questions for you about the process for approving and permitting a subdivision generally in List Center. And I realize you may not be able to answer that now, but it could be a good idea to educate the public about it. I want to understand who actually makes the decision that a development happens? Is it the mayor? Is it the city council? Is it the landowner? Is it the project manager? I have the uncomfortable perception that city staff is working hard for the developers and the citizens' concerns about projects in general are immaterial to their plans. Can anyone purchase a piece of land and get a permit to build a subdivision? Do they need permission from anyone? Or is it just the ability to pay a permit fee to the city of List Center? Where do citizens get a say in the process, the ones who will experience a measurable negative impact? I brought mine sewer bill today to drop off in the drop box out front. Thank you for that convenient option. The city of List Center provides sewer services in many cases to developments. Will there be increasing fees to accommodate these subdivisions and many proposed for List Center? Thank you, Riley, for that very informative report, by the way. I appreciated that. There are certainly many new developments. At what point do millions of dollars need to get invested in the sewer system to support developments? How much will the sewer bill increase from all the different developments? How much of the permit fees goes towards offsetting these costs? Thank you, Riley. Is it enough? Is the city council and mayor in charge of setting fees, or are the developers indirectly in charge of the city? Is they will be dictating the sewer fees down the line just by virtue of their permissions to build? It is important we identify now who is making decisions for the city, and I suspect the city will need to invest in infrastructure to accommodate generally subdivisions in all sorts of new ways. Thank you for your time and service. I will drop this off on my way out.
Thank you. I'm sorry, what was your name again? Was it, was it Lisa?
Yes, my name is Lisa Apple, 1235 East Lucas Street.
Lisa, I will have city staff reach out to you and answer those questions you asked.
Y'all, the front door is locked.
Oh.
Yeah.
Get that open.
Doesn't it?
It's, it's on a timer. It's on a timer. Do we not get it turned off?
I'm going to have to stand on the desk.
No, I want people here. Do you want to open that, Brian? Yeah.
Thank you. Craig Talinda, 1235 East Lucas. I was here to speak, um, about the Vineyard Vista. And in lieu of that, um, I will say that simply if this process is such that us here cannot interact with you there, then we need to change that process. There is no way that this city is going to meet the goals of accommodating growth while preserving the environment, quality of life, and providing adequate public infrastructure without that engagement. And we need to get into these rules that have, have prevented us from being able to make our case, and we need to change those as soon as we can. We need to take the city and make sure that the people that live here have their, their voice heard in this process. That's it. Thank you.
Do you see anybody there, Angie? Any names in front of you?
Ruth? Is that the hot one?
Yeah.
My name is Ruth Hord Blackwood, and I live at 1261 East 18th Street. Andrew?
Hold it, George, in more.
Should it die again? No. If you can come step over here, Ruth, I, we apologize.
I've worked with those before.
Yeah.
So my name is Ruth Hord Blackwood. I live at 1261 East 18th Street on the corner of East 18th and Heritage Loop. And, um, I was prepared to make comment, but I'm not going to comment on that specifically. So I'm going to go right to the roads in our neighborhood, and they are in really bad shape. I have a hole that I patch myself. I have a hole that I patch myself at the end of my driveway that is getting bigger and bigger. I, because I am a corner lot, I own everything. I have the stop sign. I have the fire plug. I have all the utilities. I have multiple different agencies pulling up to check something. I get the school bus stopping, letting off children. And I get the street sweeper, who I'm not sure how many times I've even counted that they've come in 22 years. The last time he came, he took away one of the limbs on my tree. So, and so I was told it was my fault and that I needed to cut that down. So that it hung out too far over the street. And so when I came down, I came down and talked to a gentleman here, and he was very nice. But on the way down, I think I counted at least 44 trees who have limbs that hang out over the street. So I am concerned with all the new subdivisions and all the new housing that's come in, that our streets are still the same streets. And they're not made to have all this additional traffic. And we are a neighborhood. We are not a thoroughfare. We have families, children. We're a very active neighborhood with families, people who walk their dogs every day, children playing children's games, being outside, being the child, not using tablets, enjoying the fresh air. But the traffic comes up Heritage or down 18th, and they go really fast. And some of them, they don't even live here. I mean, they just, I don't know what they're doing. And when school gets out, we become the raceway for the school kids who drive. So I just wanted to throw that out there since I can't speak on the other.
Thank you, Ruth.
Steve Workman. Kelly Love.
Please.
Thank you. My name is Kelly Love. I live at 559 East 18th Street. My husband and I purchased our home in 2019 as our retirement home. We have long dealt with drainage issues on our space. We live in a particular area on 18th Street that is right in between two of the different drainage reserves. And I feel very inadequate to understand the complexities of the drainage and the flooding issues and the concerns. Our backyard is right at the base of the hill, and we look up. And we've always expected a development. We are asking for responsible and sustainable development that allows all of our neighbors to be able to live in harmony and peace in La Center. And it is clear to me tonight, and I think everyone who has been engaged in this issue, that I'm going to have to get a lot smarter about these things because our home, our asset, our livelihood depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Celeste Monroe.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. When you take a 30-acre parcel of land and cut down 90% of the trees and bulldoze the earth to shape it so you can build houses, and pour asphalt and cement to accommodate cars, and build those houses with asphalt roofs and heat and cool them with natural gas and air conditioning, that piece of land runs hotter than it did before you touched it. If you do this on a large enough scale, you're essentially creating heat islands. This is the face of global warming, which in turn has a huge impact on weather patterns and results in climate change. Communities all over the planet, both large and small, are waking up to these facts. And many are proactively adopting smart growth principles to guide their urban planning. Smart growth is an overall approach of development and conservation strategies that can help protect our health and the natural environment and make our communities more attractive, economically stronger, socially diverse, and resilient to climate change. There is ample evidence on the EPA website to support what smart growth principles look like. When I attended the session back in April to get a first look at the 20-year comprehensive plan, I was overjoyed because it seemed like smart growth principles were being baked in. La Center is an ecological gem, and I believe we have an obligation to preserve it for future generations. So when I filled out my survey, I emphasized a few of the principles that I thought were very important to our community, especially the one related to preserving open space, farmland, natural beauty, and critical environmental areas. I have been anxiously awaiting for the follow-up meeting where the city said it would share how it incorporated our feedback from that survey into the first draft of the plan. I think this is a first step for us to basically have a shared vision for what we need to do with this community. And I really am waiting to see what that plan looks like. We stand before you today frustrated that we don't have the ability to influence decisions that have a material impact on us. We're working hard to persuade you to listen to our points of view. There's clearly a disconnect with what the community wants and the decisions that council is facing with the numerous development applications in La Center that seem to be completely at odds with what we saw in the 20-year plan. These decisions will affect this town forever. But sadly, our engagement is more as adversaries than as allies. We need to do better. We need to slow down. We need to listen to each other. And most of all, we need to take a longer view.
David Dyke. Al Lewis. Al Lewis.
Is that looking at all?
Please step over here, Al.
Al Lewis, 2188 East Gaither Avenue. What I came up to talk about today is we have a five-acre parcel that of land, we call it the Wetlands, that's behind 18th and Gaither Avenue. The weeds there are about four and a half feet high. They need to be cut. It's privately owned. In the past, the city has let the owners know that they need to get the grass down. I believe it's in our ordinance. It has not been done. I came the beginning of July to talk about it at City Hall. Nothing still has been done. I'm afraid that's a real fire hazard. We'll worry about the water come rainy season. But right now, it's a fire issue, and I would like to see that done. Also, when you were doing your planning for the planning, for your budget, I had talked about the condition of our roads in town at that time. And I talked that we had done a lot of crack sealing, and we have not done any sealing of our roads at all. And I didn't see that that was in the budget. I would hope that when you listen to us citizens, that you incorporate some of it. And if you're not going to, if you know us, let us know why. Because there's a lot of folks out there that don't think you hear them or you don't care what you hear. So I just think it would be better for communication. Thank you.
Just so you know, Al, pavement is expensive. Pavement is expensive, and we are working on repavement projects. We do have them in the works.
Good, because in years past, we would do small sections at a time, but if we did it every year, eventually we got through the whole town, but we haven't had it done for over five years, six years now.
Well, I will take my hat off to Tracy over in Public Works. We didn't even have a road inventory of the city. So now with the striping that we've had done, that hasn't been done since 2016 or 17, we now have a road inventory. So now we are taking care of roads and working on paving projects. In fact, I think we just fixed the minefield up by the estates there by, what street is that? 10th? I think it's 10th. Yeah, it was bad. It was really bad. It swallowed a car.
Has anybody addressed Stone Creek where they redid the roads where we've got the bulge?
Tracy, would you like to speak to that?
I have, if you look on the website, an RFB out right now for a contractor to come fix the three bioswales. Well, not the bioswales, but the bentonite dams. Yes, it's out right now.
So we are on top of it. We are actively working on it. And we do hear everyone.
I was just making a general statement. We'd just like a response. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Dennis Hill.
Council, Mayor, and citizens of La Center. I got three times. I want to reach out and just, first of all, I wanted to just thank Tracy for her interface with the community dealing with the Vista, Vineyard Vista subdivision. I really appreciate her doing that. She also has a staff engineer by the name of Tony. And I know that they would both be available. And I get questions. I'm on the Planning Commission. And once in a while, I get questions about what about this and the code, and what about that specifically? Both of them, I'm sure, are available to answer questions. And you should make yourself available, get on their schedule, sit down with them, and try to get some of these questions answered because I think they're real questions that need to be answered to your satisfaction. I also want to just thank the city for getting the striping done. That was really good to see that come one day, see that sign going up, says we're going to be busy striping. And next day, a couple days later, it's done. The city's not completely done, but a good portion of it is done. And I think it's going to be, I think the striping, not having the striping is a safety issue. You know, particularly coming down La Center Road, it's a safety issue and probably all over our city. The other question I have here regarding, is addressed to Commander Sample. I know there's been discussion about, we've got three full-time sheriff officers. And my question, I guess, is when do you anticipate we'll have a full staff of officers? You might address that possibly. And then how are we filling and are we doing a good job in filling the vacant shifts within the city so that we're getting the coverage that we were, it was agreed upon? So I'll sit down, but if you could address those, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Commander, do you want to speak with Dennis after the meeting? Thank you.
Kimberly Goheen Elbin.
It's wonderful to see people here, citizens of Clark County, Washington. So my name is Kimberly Goheen Elbin. I am a life citizen patriot of Clark County, Washington, USA. And I live here, I've lived here for over 30 years where my mother was born. I'll tell you, if there was ever a time I need five minutes, and since I would like to make an example of the public in charge, actually, of our local government, I'm going to ask this council right now if I can take over three minutes, not five, probably four. And I'd like to ask right now, instead of back and forth talk, I'll just speak.
And I'm fine with it, Kimberly, but there is one thing you cannot speak about is Vineyard Vista. If you do not hear what's on.
Thank you, yes. I was the one on the phone. I actually am quite active. God put me on fire at the start of this pandemic when I found out where I was born, Vancouver, as a United Nations member. I'll interject real quick here that the mayor, Anne McInerney Ogle, of Vancouver is a 16-year member of the United Nations, not following the Constitution. They, she is involved, excuse me, in that CREDC 1.5.2 tonight that you should read. Her and two other city council members from Vancouver, a socialist Marxist, excuse me, local government. And therefore, this Columbia River Economics Development Council, of whom is the board, they're on the board, the mayor, they want to grow. There's a deputy city manager up for a vote of the council, of whom are all Marxists. And they're going to vote on their new city manager. It's a deep thing. I know you want to stick to La Center here, but this is deeper than that, folks. And I think that you're starting to finally see that our largest city is going to, is the fourth-largest city of overpopulation pollution. And the new city manager wants to, whoever they're going to pick, wants to make it the second-largest city in Washington State. That is your city in Vancouver. Yes, I was born there. I have a heart there, but so should you. Because they are not only a sanctuary city, they also are allowing illegal immigrants. And that's why you're having all this building going on because your hard-earned tax dollars are paying for a checkbox that some of these will house illegal immigrants. Mark my word, if they're already here, there's tens of thousands of them here in Clark County. I've been speaking for over three years, especially I ask citizens here to engage in the Clark County Council immediately. Listen to the past things. I had a great time today. Mr. Medvedje, he's leaving. He has taken First Amendment rights away along with the mayor of Vancouver, who took two years ago our three minutes of speaking at that council meeting and turned it into a Marxist agenda one time every three months at a roundtable where citizens could not hear me and I could not hear them. That is how a Marxist state works. We don't want our local city to do that. We want to go grassroots, start here, do what our forefathers warned us to do, assemble. And they warned us, assemble when a government is dangerous. It's in the Bill of Rights and the Constitution, and that's what I follow. I actually serve, and I like to say this first, God, family, and country. They're using our hard-earned tax dollars to carry out these agendas. La Center cannot grow anymore. They want to build a few-story-high new downtown right over here in a farmland, which I've been begging for, a community garden. Let's get the community with your folks. We're going to have to get down the grassroots real soon here this year, and I'm not kidding you. So we need a farm. That farmland cannot go into a heat source, as you said. We're already overpopulated. We're going to have to get a four-lane bridge. I mean, really think about this, and it starts with criminal Biden's America Rescrew Plan because we're getting screwed three times over through these agendas and the Growth Management Act. Clark County got involved in that act. They did not have to. They voted us in. And now we're fighting it. Not all counties in Washington State are members of the Growth Management Act, but you better get up. And I'm asking, somebody mentioned it today. I think we could put forth an agenda to have the public state that we want to get out of this Growth Management Act. Stop the growth for five years. Give us a break. We're trying to heal. And you're not going to flood us with this agenda. It's an agenda. It's an agenda using your hard-earned tax dollars. We got to stop it. Common sense. And in November, who knows what's going to happen? I don't. Only God does. And all depending on that, the climate action scam thing will be repealed. And this is why. Yes, we have polluted this earth to death. I pray to God. I am so sorry. I've always been a garbage picker-upper. I don't, you know, all that stuff. I am there. So I preach a lot of that. But we've hurt the earth so bad that they want to do this depopulation program and the One World Order. This is how you do it. You weaken America with 400 cities like Portland and Vancouver, Seattle, Olympia. They are 400, they're members of the United Nations, undermining us, using your hard-earned tax dollars, re-screwing us over and over again. You know what? God is good. I am talking also about the Comprehension Plan. If you don't want that, I don't, and I don't want Ferguson, I'll tell you that right now. He's worse than Hensley. I suggest voting for Sammy Bird. We can forgive him. We forgive a lot of people in this world. We're not perfect. Let's make America godly again. And thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kimberly. Any other public comments? Any of those calling in that'd like to make a public comment, press star six. Oh, I'm sorry. You want to do a public? Yeah. Yeah, no, come on up. State your name. State your name.
Sorry, I'm Dinah McLean. I'm newly appointed to the Planning Commission, or reappointed, I should say. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew they can attend our meetings, just keep an eye on the agendas to provide your feedback about municipal codes, the comprehensive plan and stuff. We usually voice our recommendations to the city. Public is welcome to make comments during the public comments section. And it's your first opportunity to make some changes to, like I said, to a comprehensive plan and municipal code. And then from us, it goes to the city. And so that's your second chance to also help. goes to the city. And so that's your second chance to also help make some changes. So thank you.
Thank you, Dinah. Thank you for the reminder as well. I mean.
Second Tuesday of the month.
Yeah, I was just going to say the meeting types. And just so the public knows, there's usually maybe one or two people that go to that meeting. So if you guys want to start helping make change in the city for codes and such like that, that's the start. Any other public comments in the audience? Okay, for those calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record. Any callers, Maria? Okay. Do we have any comments to be read?
Oops, I have one comment to be read from Al Filla. He was unable to attend tonight. Wow, look at all the people here. What is the city going to do with the speed signs at the bridge coming into town and the junction on the way out of town? When is the city going to get a new code enforcement officer? And the grass on the lots at 14th and Bolin need to be mowed. God bless America.
Thank you, Al. All right. I appreciate all the public comment and concerns for the city tonight. Thank you for attending the meeting. Next up is council comments. Councilmember Fox.
Hi, good evening. I know this evening has been whirlwind. You guys have a lot of emotions and a lot to say. And please know that we want to hear you. We're so glad you're here. Please remember, we live in La Center, right? We have homes here. We also, you know, think in just the same terms as you do, of protecting our assets. I think most of us own homes here, some more than one. So I think that, you know, just remember that. The codes were here before we were here. And so, you know, we're learning at the same time, and we can only kind of control what comes in front of us. And we do want what's best for La Center. And, you know, we understand the restrictions of the way our town's laid out, and development isn't always the right decision. And, you know, we're going to do our best to work together as a team. If you guys voted for us, you know, I want you to know that we do listen. And even though we're not allowed to talk too much, we are processing, and we do want to do what's right for the people, because that's why we're here. And that's why we have a council, is to represent you folks. And so, as we get more information about this, and we get the opportunity to weigh in, just please know that it's not just about money and pleasing developers. Really, like, you know, Tracy and our city attorney said, you know, these policies are run for anybody. So there's no special treatment for anybody. Anybody has a right to go buy land and submit paperwork. So, and unfortunately, sometimes as homeowners, we do have to take a cost and go get, you know, a land attorney. And if we really feel that strongly, we do have that right. But if it comes out of our pocket, but we do have the right to do it. So, other than that, I'm looking forward to a beautiful weekend, celebrating our beautiful town, and starting with our parade, of course, as we all know. I hope to see a lot of you there. I'm very excited. We'll be out and about with my boys. So, other than that, I just wanted to follow up and see what's going on with the dog issue at Riverside, because I'm still receiving messages, and there's some frustration. So, just recently. And so it just seems to be, yeah, I just would love a follow-up on what's going on with that.
Sure, if you want to meet with.
Sure, yeah, afterwards. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Casper.
Thank you. I'm going to keep it short tonight, but I'm really, nothing in here is falling on deaf ears. We are hearing what you're saying. But I want to challenge every one of you to keep coming back even after this situation is over. It's, there's, there's so many things that we talk about every two weeks in here that concern all of you. And especially if we want to start addressing issues with code. There's, there's a ton of them. They're deep. Tracy's been doing a great job digging into it. I think we've made some really good progress over the last two years in updating our code. But unless we get participation from, from everybody to give that information, people speaking about certain things in public comment period are sending in questions and, and comments on the way the city is being managed, the way the codes are written, the decisions that come before us. If it doesn't come to us, we can't make a decision on it. And we're not the ones that can always bring these issues forward. So, I sure hope to see you guys more and more, and to continue showing up every other month, or Wednesday night, and giving us the information that, that we need. So, thank you.
Thank you. I echo that sentiment. Councilmember Leah.
Well, I want to reiterate to what Casey said, that I'm very thankful that when you show up for these meetings and be involved in what's going on in the city, and not just occasionally. It's great to have you here. I wanted to say thank you to Phil Sample for being part of the Police Activities League and that very first literary event at La Center Elementary on June 13. Thought that was very cool. I saw your picture. So I thank you for that. Also, I wanted to say that, once again, I attended the Stern Wheeler Park concert. The week before, I hobbled around and came in from the back with my walker. And it wasn't so easy getting around. So I thought, next time, I'm going to go to the handicap spot. So I went to the handicap, handicap spot, and it was great, because you're sitting up, you're, you can hear the music fine, but you're sitting up, and you just have this great view. You're sitting up high. And there was other people sitting back there that said they were so excited about having that built. And there was like an extra cement platform, and then a nice bar. So, so if you're in a wheelchair, you don't roll off. And I've been in a wheelchair this last summer, thanks for the car accident. So it was very, very nice. And people that were up there really appreciated that. And they said, be sure to let the city council know. So.
Actually, that was done, that was a suggestion by one of the residents. So we do listen, right? And we do try to accommodate if it makes sense and is efficient, right?
Yeah, it was very nice. Also, I wanted to say how beautiful. Thank you, Tracy, for all the, you know, getting public works out there and doing the striping on the streets and the bark dust in the parks. I mean, everything's getting all spiffy-dup. It's been really, really nice. And, but I also kind of, as my last comment, ballots came out this last week. So I'm just saying, please be sure to vote. It's very, it's your constitutional right to vote. And you think the primary doesn't, isn't that important sometimes? The primary is important, too. So vote in the primary and vote in the general, please, because your vote does count. You know, if you think one person, it won't count. But what if there's a thousand of you that says my vote won't count? So I just encourage people to do, to be sure to vote. Yeah. So I guess that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We do have some staff reports tonight, actually, one. Maria is out. And if you have any questions about her report, if you've looked at it, please reach out to her. She is on vacation. Long deserved. So our only staff report tonight will be the police staff report being presented by Commander Sample. And Phil, they took a picture of your good side, so you're okay. Commander?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Councilmembers, city attorney, and our community, thank you very much. Before I go into the staff report, I just want to say that if, if there's concerns of traffic or other things going on, don't wait for a month to come back in here and talk about it. I'm right down the street over here. You can come over and talk to us. You can email me. You can call and leave a message, okay? There's no reason to wait for this long period of time to say, hey, these semis are giving us problems. We need you to check it out. When it happens, please call us. I encourage it very much. So. Okay, with that being said here, we're going to go into our PowerPoint here. This, this month here, June of 2024, our calls for service and officer-initiated activity, it's been pretty steady. So as far as the community-initiated activity, the calls coming into us has been, it looks exactly like May, but it is very, it is exact, I should say that. Officer-initiated activity has dropped off a little bit, but that does not mean that we're not out there patrolling and doing other things. This is just how it's documented and recorded for these purposes right here. Slide number two, please. I should move mine with it. So the report for 2024 here, May as opposed to June, we're down to 23 as opposed to 33, which is only a number of 10. It seems like a lot, but it's not really a lot. The deputies and the officers working the overtime shifts have been addressing a lot of the concerns around here. And documentation does not say that we're not educating the public, or trying to keep people within the tolerance of the law and the city municipal codes. So those are our numbers for that. If we look at the reports written here, 23 versus 24, in the month of June, it's only a small difference of about five. So we're pretty much on track for what we're doing here. I think when you look at how sometimes the reports will spike and they go down, that's all contingent upon the community itself and what's going on around here. Summertime brings more people out, more things happen. And this is how we're documenting. So let's go for some notable calls or incidents here. We had a referral on an assault from juvenile. We also have had a vandalism report, broken windows on a travel trailer. One of our deputies found out there was a three-year-old found playing in the park alone. So we went out there and were able to reunite the three-year-old back with the parents. We recovered a stolen car here within the community. We've had warrant arrests with two district court warrants. We've had assault arrest. We've done violations of restraining orders and protection orders. Harassment, that's, this harassment case we have is still an open investigation. Violation of a no-contact order, and mal-mish of vandalism. So there are a lot of things going on. So when you don't really see a deputy out there doing a speed zone emphasis or looking for speeders, they're probably on different calls. And some of these calls take a little bit more time to actually work through, especially if you have multiple people involved, victims, suspects, witnesses. So it takes a little bit of time to get all that taken care of. We'll go down to the next portion, please. This is our traffic. Take us, June of 2024, we've had seven traffic infractions, and seven criminals, and one noncriminal. So about 15 are just this month alone right here. So we are out there writing paper, trying to educate the community as they're driving. One of the things that is kind of unique about La Center here is that for the day shift deputies, you only have one deputy on shift full-time. And so, if the deputy goes out Fourth Street toward the end, then the other side's speeding. We go backwards, Pac Highway, then Fourth Street's speeding. And so we try to mix it up and move around. And even they, I've even heard some citizens say, well, your deputy's kind of hiding in the corner over there. Well, really, there's no real place to park on the street out here without making a hazard for ourselves or for others. And so no one's hiding, you know? It's not, you can't really hide in a mark patrol car with these lights and sirens and, you know, it's got all the names on the side. So we're doing our best we can, and we're going to continue to keep doing it. As time goes on, we'll start learning more about the city and where the problems are occurring. And once we address those, they just kind of shift over a little bit. So we're going to be fluid with them. And as they shift, we're going to shift. We have to study them to be successful against them. Next slide. And Councilmember Merna has just talked about the PAL program. June 13 was the first time we were able to bring PAL to the city of La Center, connecting cops and kids and community together. And PAL stands for the Police Activities League. And basically, we go off into schools, and we have safety talks, we read books, we try to bond with the children. One of the big things is that I don't want any child to be afraid of us. And throughout this career, I've been to restaurants or other places, and people will sit down and go, you see, honey, if you mess up, I'm going to have him get you. No, that's not the message. I don't want them to be scared of me and think that I'm going to get them. I want them to be able to come to me when there's a problem or report an issue. So back here with PAL, we go up in there. This year, like I said, June 13 was the first time we've had our event here in La Center. It was, I have to tell you this, your elementary kids are phenomenal. I've done this for years. I've been to a lot of schools. But La Center is a special place. And I say that from the bottom of my heart after interacting with some of these kids here. Some of their questions were not your typical questions. It wasn't like, is that a gun? They didn't ask those kind of things. Yeah, is that a clock? Yeah. So, you know, some of the questions that were asked by some of the kids, like, for instance, took us all by surprise, is like, what kind of food do they serve in jail? Is it good food? What happens if you don't like your roommate? And I'll tell you, to be honest with you, we couldn't answer a lot of, we're like, I've never been asked that before. That's a, I got a big question mark on my forehead here. But it was a fantastic time. Can we go to the next slide, please? And maybe we can blow that one up a little bit. So this is the group that came here to, for the PAL event here. So we have the Clark County Sheriff's Office, Callas Tribal participated, Ridgefield. We have two PAL representatives here. Plus, we had WSP, State Patrol came in, and Sheriff's Office Auxiliary Force. When we announced that we were going to have a literacy event here in La Center, a lot of people wanted to be involved. And I'm so happy that they were involved, because out of working with the kids, I think that day, we had 135 kids at the elementary. And as we go around, we'll go to the next slide here. There's one of our pictures with them. As we, as we go through the program, we read a book, a deputy will read a story to them in a book. The kids get an opportunity to come out and see the vehicles. We brought our armor here. Every patrol car had their doors open, so kids can come around and look at it, touch things, answer questions. They were very in tune with everything that was happening. Also, we take them back, and each child that day gets a free book. We put books out on the table. Everyone gets to pick a book. And the bonus at the very end is that sometimes deputies and officers will stay around, and we'll autograph the books for them. We'll sign the books. Practically 135 kids wanted everyone's signature on it. I have never seen that before in all the years I've been with PAL. They, we had lines like we were at Disneyland waiting for, for the big ride or something, you know? But that's, that's a credit to the community. And it's too bad that the superintendent's not here today to hear about this, because he'd be so proud of his schools and the kids and whatnot. So, and if we go to the next slide, please. What a fun day. And this was us being goofy right here at the very end, just having a blast together. So I know that these events are to educate the kids, but sometimes the kids educate us. And every deputy or officer that walked away that day knew that this was a special place, and the schools and the kids are very special here. So we were proud to be able to come here. And I cannot wait until next year. We can do another event, hopefully before June 13, when not everyone's gone. But, but we're going to make it a reoccurring, a project to do. We're going to keep coming out here. We'll be with the kids. I even know at one point, one of the parents came up, and she was kind of alarmed. She was like, why are there so many police cars here at the elementary school? Is everything safe? And I was like, well, I think it would be with all these cops over here right now. But no, I just explained to her what our mission was and what we were doing, invited her to come over, look at the armor, sit in the car, do everything else. There is no secrets here. You know, we have very good intentions. Sometimes they don't always play out that way. But we have pure intentions. We want to help the community. So, with that being said, I think that was my last slide. I just want to thank the community and our council members, once again, for the opportunity to be up here and be part of this. And you guys are very special. And thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Commander. Any questions or comments for the commander? Or chief? Whoever you want to call, whatever you want to be called tonight. Actually, if you can wait till after the meeting. Yeah. Any, any questions or comments for the chief?
No, that was a great report. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all the work you do for our community. I'm guessing you guys will be at the parade, not in the parade, but at the parade. Or not, not necessarily you? Okay. Okay, cool. Sure. Awesome.
Just so the public knows, Commander Phil Sample's favorite donut is glazed. So. There you go. Thank you again, Commander. All right. So we do have a couple ordinances tonight, and a very familiar voice will be presenting those. All right. So we do have a couple of ordinances tonight and a very familiar voice will be presenting those. Ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash zero three Parks Plan Update. Brian Cass will be presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can y'all hear me all right?
Just fine. Thank you.
All right. Well, uh, the first ordinance, uh, for council to consider this evening uh, is ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash oh three, which will amend the city's capital facilities plan and also adopt the twenty-twenty-four Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. So back in twenty-twenty-two, the city started this process, uh, contracting with conservation techniques to update the city's, uh, parks plan. Uh, they use the twenty-seventeen plan as a basis for the updates, um, and inventoried, uh, the parks that had come online um, since the last plan was updated and also completed the needs assessments, um, based on both, uh, growth that had happened since twenty-seventeen and also the projected growth, um, that we'll be, um, planning for with the comprehensive plan, um, that we adopt next year. Um, they also completed a public, uh, community survey and gathered public inputs and found that there was a strong support in the center for parks and especially for trails from the citizens. Uh, in parallel with that plan update, um, we also did an update to the six-year Parks Capital Facilities Plan. Um, this plan identifies projects, um, that are needed to fill gaps and correct efficiencies in the parks and trail system network. Um, and then we prioritize those projects in the capital facilities plan. Along with that capital facilities plan comes the, uh, Park Impact Fee, um, review, which is part of the way that we raise funds for, um, constructing new parks. Um, basically every home that goes in and every new home that's developed in the city of the center pays a park impact fee, um, to help, um, build parks for the demand that those families that are moving into those new, uh, homes put onto the park system. Um, and then also in addition to the parks plan, we also have a minor update to the transportation capital facilities plan. Um, and this change is to, uh, classify Fifth Street as a minor collector, or excuse me, yeah, a minor collector. Um, and that would be to serve the new downtown subarea, um, that is currently undergoing the planning process. Uh, generally this change would happen later on in the process, along with the, um, cap, with the subarea plan adoption. However, um, with our federal lobbyists, we have applied for some federal funds to help us construct the improvements to Fifth Street. And in order to be eligible for those funds, we have to have the road classified as something beyond just a local roadway as it's classified now. So currently Fifth Street is classified as, um, a minor collector on the opposite side of, of, uh, Pacific Highway. And so this change just simply extends that classification, uh, west of Pacific Highway. And then as the road curves to the north and connects into Golden Eagle Drive. Um, we're also through that planning process, working on, um, traffic calming and other measures to, um, reduce traffic, uh, volumes and speeds and encourage people not to go to the north along Golden Eagle Drive, but to go out to Pacific Highway on Fifth Street. Um, so for the budget impacts for these, uh, two changes, uh, firstly, the Parks Recreation and Capital Facilities Plan, um, we are proposing an increase to the park impact fee. Uh, currently the, uh, rate for a new home is two thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars. That is, uh, as we have previously discussed in previous meetings, uh, quite a bit lower than other jurisdictions, um, in the area are charging. Um, and so we are proposing to increase that to four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars per unit. Um, and then the transportation, uh, plan update will make, uh, as I said before, Fifth Street eligible for those federal funds, um, that we are crossing our fingers that we receive, um, and that will reduce the local share, the local city funds that we need to put into that roadway. Uh, so at this point, happy to answer any questions that the council may have, um, before the public hearing is opened and the council considers adopting this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, any questions?
I have a question.
Brian, can you?
Okay, the new, uh, proposed rate of four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars is over a thousand dollars more per unit than what has been. And my question, then, then the builder has to pay that. And, um, and of course I'm all for parks and trails. I want that. I'm an outdoor person. And I know a lot of people in the center are too. Um, and it's very important for the community and for your health and so on. I can't say enough about that. Um, but I do have a question about then it's one more thing that we add on to the price of housing because the, the builder has to probably add that on to the price of the house. And then we get back to affordable housing. So I really want the parks and the trails and all that, but you said though that, that the price we were charging is significantly less than other cities. So that sparked my interest. Um, so could you comment on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, the park impact fee, um, hasn't been raised and I think it's close to ten years at this point. And so, uh, I think back when this orig, when the current rate of two thousand eight hundred dollars was set, it was somewhat in line, uh, maybe a hair lower, but, uh, you know, close to being in line with other jurisdictions. And then over the years, um, with, you know, other jurisdictions updating their plans, cost of construction going up, uh, inflation, all of that driving up costs. Um, you know, other jurisdictions have raised their rates and we, uh, at this point haven't yet. So, uh, it's always a careful balance there between, you know, affordable housing, uh, and, uh, because you're right, this, you know, directly will have to roll into the cost of, of a house. Uh, the four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars per unit is for this, the rate for a single family. There is a lower rate for accessory dwelling units. And I think with next year's comprehensive plan updates, we have to look at tiering rates for, um, you know, multifamily and other types of housing that, um, you know, may put a lower impact on the park systems. Um, but, you know, this four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollar rate, uh, for a single family home will sort of set the basis for that, um, sort of tiered structure that we're going to be looking at next year. Uh, so, um, you make some good points. It's definitely a, a fine balance there. Um, you know, this rate was, you know, come upon to, you know, fund the projects that, um, the citizens and the planning commission and the council have identified as priority projects that need to get done. Um, and, you know, so it's possible to lower the rate. It just means dropping some projects off that list. So tough decision.
Um, I have been through this before with, uh, different multiple municipalities. And, um, that question always comes up from a council member or a commissioner. And I just wanted to comment on it that when you, when you calculate your transportation or your park impact fees, it's based on the, um, population growth, the amount of, um, houses that are coming in, the amount of citizens, the amount of land that you have for parks because you're required to have per your comprehensive plan. So many parks, trails and systems for your community based on your population and projected growth. So what you do is you figure out how much, how many parks we have. Let's say you're required to have ten acres and you only have five. Now you have to figure out how are we, how am I going to increase my parks, the additional five acres? So what you have to do is you have to figure out what's it costs per acre? And how much are, how are we going to be able to make, uh, make a playground or do whatever? What's that going to cost us? So you base your projected growth of your builders that are coming in on what it would take to fund what you need for your comprehensive plan for your parks. The other thing is too, um, that you make the comment that, well, you know, affordable housing, so on and so forth. When a builder comes in, he comes in, he has to pay these park impact fees. They have to pay the transportation impact fees, no matter where they go and build. If he's coming in here and he can build a house, he's going to build a house here or in Ridgefield or in Vancouver for the cheapest he can to make the most profit. If you have a park impact fee of twenty-eight hundred dollars and now you're going to forty-one hundred, he doesn't care. Alls he's going to do is pocket that money. So I want you to be very aware of that. Whether he's making a low-income house or not, he's going to take that extra thousand dollars and build it here because he can now make an extra thousand dollars on his parking back fees. They don't, they don't, um, directly pass that through. It's more so of the high-end, uh, fixtures that you're putting in your homes. What are you do, what kind of walls, what kind of textures being done, what kind of, um, appliances are going in there? Are they low-end appliances? Are they stainless steel appliances? Are they finishing the yard? Are they leaving that for somebody else to do? So really your, your impact fees are the, the minimal that raise your price of your home. It's more so the profit that he's going to make. So.
Thank you. Thank you. That's very, very good. And that's what I wanted to hear and I assumed what citizens would want to hear also. Because I, I think this is, there's been a fabulous job done in the center, what I've seen. And I did spend this whole afternoon reading those three hundred pages that was in my city council notes about all the planning and the parks that we need to have for the livability of the city. And, um, I, I, I think it's great because I love to have the parks and the outdoors and all that. But I did want to hear the bigger picture and particularly so the citizens could hear that too. But there was a lot of information on those literally three hundred pages. It was great. Thank you though, Tracy.
Thank you, Merna. Uh, any other questions or comments for Brian or Tracy? Okay, moving on here. Thank you again, Brian. Um, at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Time is nine oh nine. Are there any public hearing comments from the audience? This will be based on the ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash zero three Parks Plan Update. Melissa? No, no, please use this one. Yeah, thank you.
So again, this, if you read all this, and this is what I've been begging Clark County citizens to do for almost four years now. Read everything that's going on. Yes, council members before them, uh, applied all these new policies, ordinances and, uh, codes, but they didn't have to do it. Unfortunately, the mayor previous was on that socialist Marxist plan. That is true. You could look it up. It's called the I C L E I. It's United Nations and does not follow what we think would be, uh, what they should follow, the Constitution. I'm gonna beg people to read the Constitution. This is our council. And, uh, it's our right and duty to speak up. And you should be here, boring or not about certain things. A lot of people have to leave. We have a life. I get it. Believe me, I get it. I speak probably five times a week, every week. So, um, with all due respect to Brian Katz, and I realize he's, uh, filling in as, um, putting forth this ordinance, I might add, he's unelected. And that's all, with all due respect, I happen to care for the man, but he is out of the country. And I'm, and I'm asking, or and making a motion to put this agenda on hold as it relates to growth that we do not want here in the center any longer. Again, we can have monies come and revenue from the I-five corridor that we can put stuff there. That's okay. I don't know if people know it, but they want to take away when you, uh, drive across the bridge. You know, that beautiful area up there. You want to put a big motel up there and whatever else goes with it, strip mall and all that. It's quite a little bit of property. You're going to find those homeowners are being forced and, uh, to sell. So there's those that want to and those that don't. I get it. Uh, fortunately for me, I'm a poor woman, but rich in the Lord. Um, so this plan, and you do need to read it, it does mention the Growth Management Act. It mentions, mentions the comprehension plan that we didn't have to be in, uh, during this, uh, criminal, um, for last four years, this was all, uh, unprecedented stuff that's finally coming to, uh, fold here that people are taking advantage of, such as developers and this and that. Yes, they have to put food on their table, but this agenda is making them wealthy. They move to those, to our sanctuary counties. And they move here, they strip us of the, uh, of our lands and then they, uh, turn around and move out while we're stuck here with population pollution.
Thank you. Any other public comments from the audience? Please step up, state your name and, uh, address to the microphone and stick to the topic of the ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash zero three. All right. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
No public comments to be read.
Okay. Any callers calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record and stick to the ordinance at hand. Any callers, clerk?
No callers.
Seeing as there's no callers, comments to be read or any others from the audience, I'd like to close the public hearing at nine thirteen P M. And turn this over to council. Counsel, do you have any further questions, comments, concerns? Thanks for letting us borrow your microphone tonight, by the way.
No questions.
No questions?
No.
Do I have a motion for this ordinance?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash zero three, amending the capital facilities plan, adopting the twenty-twenty-four Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan and updating the park impact fee rate to four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars per unit.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. This is an ordinance. So can I, clerk, can I please have a roll call vote? Brian?
No.
No.
Uh, Councilmember Fox?
Yes. Okay. Did you get that? Yeah. Yeah.
Councilmember Boyle?
No.
When they're not here?
The ones that are present.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Leha?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Thank you, council. Appreciate it. Brian, Tracy, great work. Thank you. I would expect nothing less. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have another ordinance, ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash zero seven compost. And Mr. Brian Cass will be presenting again. Brian?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so back in March of twenty-twenty-two, uh, the state legislative session that year, um, Washington State Legislature passed House Bill seventeen ninety-nine. On the purpose of that bill was to reduce methane emissions, uh, associated with, uh, organic materials being disposed of in landfills and to expand the market for recycled compost products. Uh, a portion of that bill requires cities, uh, that provide or contract to provide, uh, residential organic collections uh, to adopt a procurement ordinance to implement, uh, what became R C W forty-three nineteen A one twenty. Uh, the city does have a contract with waste connections through our, um, inter-local agreement with Clark County to provide, um, yard debris pickup in the city. So the city is subject to this requirement and is required to pass this compost procurement ordinance. Uh, and essentially the ordinance requires that the city, um, use composted, uh, recycled compost products um, whenever feasible in projects that include landscaping, uh, construction and post-construction soil amendments, uh, erosion control, stormwater runoff filtering, uh, vegetation growth or, um, others, uh, forms of erosion control, uh, projects or in low-impact development, um, projects. Um, so when the city is either doing those, these type of projects themselves, or we are bidding a project um, that involves one of those categories, we're supposed to take a look and see if compost products can feasibly be used in the project. Um, and if so, we are supposed to, um, specify that those projects or those products, excuse me, be used. We're also supposed to give priority to purchasing, um, compost products that are produced locally, that are certified by, uh, nationally recognized organization, um, that are derived from municipal solid waste. So the, basically the debris that are being picked up, uh, in the county here and that meet state quality standards. Uh, and there are three producers of, um, of compost in the area locally that meet those requirements. They are Dirt Huggers, H and H Wood Recycling and Cowlet's Valley Compost. Um, further, if the city is not required to use compost, if they're not available, um, in a reasonable amount of time, if they don't comply with, uh, the specifications or standards, um, or federal standards or, uh, and most importantly, if they're not reasonable or competitive to, uh, similar products that aren't recycled. Um, we are also supposed to, through this, uh, law, we're supposed to work with the Clark County Public Health to educate and inform. to educate and inform the citizens on how the city uses compost project, products in our operations. And then lastly, every other year, beginning at the end of this year, we need to compile a report to the Department of Ecology that basically just identifies the total number of tons of organic material that was collected and diverted from landfills. And that's something that Waste Connections would provide to us, that data, the volume and cost of compost that we purchased each year and then the source of that compost. So we expect that the budget impacts for this will be minimal. There will be some staff time to administer the program, roughly about 15 hours per year, we're estimating. And then depending on how the market goes for these recycled compost products, we may actually see a slight reduction in materials costs because again, these are, you know, basically waste that is being repurposed. We don't anticipate that there will be an increase because again, we don't have to utilize compost, recycled compost products if they are not cost competitive. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have before council holds another public hearing and considers ordinance 2024-07. Thank you.
Brian, just real quick, I just want to reiterate something so that the public and the people that are sitting here or listening and the council, I'm sure is already aware of. Can you actually state for the record what happens if we don't pass something that the state's requiring us to do?
Well, in general, I think it's, you know, similar to the other mandates where we don't get our state shared revenue of sales tax and other revenues if we're not in compliance with state law. So, you know, maybe Janine can chime in on this in the city attorney as well. You know, I haven't specifically seen that called out in as crystal clear language as we have for things like the Growth Management Act, if we're not in compliance with that. But generally, that's the kind of the hammer that the state holds over us is if we're not following state requirements, then they don't share their money with us.
It's, it's been a while since I've looked at this or at this statute, but I believe it also has some requirements related to procurement. So then you, there's a, there's an argument that if you, if you haven't adopted this and you're not complying with it and your, your bids don't reflect that or your request for bids, that there might be an argument that you're not in compliance with the state bidding laws.
Okay. You guys, you guys were aware of that, right? Okay. Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Mr. Cast? Any questions, comments, concerns? Okay. At this time, 9:21, I'd like to open up the hearing to the public. Any public comments? Please step up to the microphone right here to our right with Ms. Fox and state your name and address for the record. Please stick to the ordinance. Any public hearing comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record. Clerk, are there any comments to be read?
No comments to be read.
Kimberly, did you want to step up and speak? Okay. Yeah. Right there, please. Thank you.
I accidentally hung my phone up on my way home. The, will you remind me which one we're on here, please?
The.
No, it's not the park city. Huh?
The compost.
Oh, the compost. So I guess I am glad that I'm in person a little bit out of wind here. We have a sewer plant down here. Come to find out, Vancouver, they burn their solid waste, evidently, right there in Vancouver. Here, I think we ship it out. They're starting to use human waste, human solid waste as compost. They call it organic. I guess everything's organic, but is it healthy? Well, it's not. It goes to, this relates clear to blood donating, taking shots and everything in our sewer. Our waters are full of PSAs that are called forever chemicals. We can't have any more growth here for our own community because we are running out of resources. The compost is all, all, most of this stuff is a great idea. I get it. Composting, I have a little half acre. I call it, consider it my little farm. I compost. And. But to use the agenda in our hard-earned tax dollars to what I consider dupe the people into parks and open spaces, they actually want to take those. But they have to spend the money in a hurry or it doesn't pass, they don't get it and it doesn't follow that agenda. This all is related to the lead at the Clark County Council. This is all related to them being a member of the, which this was mentioned, the Growth Management Act again, the comprehension plan. And all of these are unconstitutional. They were put through the legislation during this wicked tyrannical government we have right now. And following the weakening of America, you don't open up a sovereign nation and let 25 million plus illegal immigrants in a nation if you still want to free people. You don't do that. Common sense, take the scales off your eyes, put your armor on and stand up like our forefathers warned us to do. And thank you very much. Like I said, I'm all into compost. Another suggestion is instead of putting a new downtown with apartments and all this, I'm suggesting that we do have a community garden there. I've suggested for a few years. I think it'd be a great spot. It drains down into the city or I mean, excuse me, into the river instead of having gas and everything else down there and sewers and waters and everything mentioned that. Again, we are low on water. You just don't know it yet. And build a community farm, a garden plot. Let's take our kids there. Let's just do this and get back to grassroots. And again.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Do your voting.
Appreciate it. Any other public comments? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. All right. At this time, 9:25 PM, I'd like to close the public comments and turn this back over to council. Council, any questions, comments, concerns? I get a motion.
Okay. Maybe, I don't think my mic's on.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2024-07, establishing compost procurement requirements as required by state law.
Second.
The movement seconded. Clerk, can I please have a roll call vote for this ordinance?
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Leah?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Ordinance passes. I know it's been a long meeting. I appreciate you guys sticking it out with us. Council, there is some unfinished business and it's with the city attorney. Would you like to?
So if, if I could just indulge, I, I was late in coming because of the traffic and I, we went into the first issue. I did have a couple of other really small issues that I wanted to report on while that, you know, before they were stale. And I generally don't like to talk this much at council meetings, but let me just do this very quickly. There, there are just a couple of things that, that I wanted to bring to your attention. So at the meeting on June 26th, I needed to interrupt a caller for some political speech and it led to some anger from the caller. And I wasn't happy with how that interaction worked. And so I wanted, I worked with Maria to try to figure out what I could do differently next time to do a better job. The first thing that Maria suggested, and I think this is a great idea, is that it was a caller and they may not have known that the person that was interrupting them was the city attorney. So I will make sure to announce my name if I have to do anything like that in the future so that they will be aware. And then I'll also clarify with the clerk to stop the timer so that the interruption doesn't, doesn't lessen their time. And I wasn't clear on that. And I'll make sure that I do that. And then finally, if they don't stop speaking to allow me to speak as, as happened, that I would describe the point of order and ask that they be muted just for the period that I'm going to raise to you the concerns that I have. And then after the comments, I would invite the person to continue their comments and to restart the timer by just respecting that, the prohibition, which in that case was, was political speech. And then only then, if they didn't comply, would they be muted or I would, it would be up to the mayor or the mayor pro tem to proceed. So the reason for the interruption was because the city is expressly prohibited from using public resources to support or oppose candidates or a ballot measure. And the PDC, the Public Disclosure Commission, found that the council meeting comment forum is using public resources. So that political speech is prohibited. And then I had a couple of questions from council, councilors after the meeting about sort of what, what, you know, what, what is the First Amendment speech as it relates to council meeting? So I just wanted to take one quick moment and address that. So the US Supreme Court has said that the First Amendment protects speech to different degrees depending on the forum where the speech is according. So your public parks, your typical places are your traditional public forums. But a council meeting has been found by the courts to be a limited public forum. And this means that the council can place viewpoint neutral, reasonable time, place and manner restriction. So our three minutes and, you know, those various things. Those are the, the restrictions that are authorized under the, under the Supreme Court's rulings. So my interruption at the meeting wasn't related to the, the viewpoints being expressed but to the topic that was, was prohibited. And I just wanted to clarify that. And then a second issue, which is also very minor, and I just wanted to raise, bring it to council's attention, is that at the, at the last few meetings, and I apologize, I actually wasn't here for the introduction of this meeting, but under the statute, the authority to excuse a council member is actually with the council as a body as opposed to the, to the mayor or the presiding officer. And that's RCW 35A 12060, in case you were interested. So that means, that section says that the council position shall become vacant if the council member fails to attend three consecutive regular meetings without being excused by the body. So I just wanted to recommend that going forward that we sort of made that small change to our process. And I am kind of new to all of your processes. So as I learn and kind of find these things, I'll bring it to your attention. And then if you have ever any questions about anything, be sure to let me know. So I hope that wasn't too long and thank you for letting me go out of turn.
Janine, the reason I didn't bring that up to council yet is because I was hoping for a full council so that we could have that discussion about the excuses and such like that. It is something we do have to be aware of and we do need to make the change. This goes in fact with the previous administration being out for so long, the council would vote to actually say if it was an excused absence or not. Right? And if it is not an excused absence, that council is a mark against it. So at three consecutive, then the person can be removed. Right?
So are we going to have a different procedure for putting in?
But I really want to have a discussion with council before we go and start doing any of that type of stuff. And so I do appreciate you.